The July 15, 2019 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Pickard will lead us in the invocation this evening.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you and welcome to everyone here at the council meeting. We do have a packed house. We'll try and get through the agenda as quickly and as orderly as possible. Start off, Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Now, we will open up our portion of the invitation audience. We do have some folks who've signed up. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the printed agenda. Let me repeat that. Items that are not on the printed agenda. Remarks are limited to two minutes. What will happen is, I'll call your name up. You state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes for the record. Again, please ask that you speak respectfully, orderly, so we can get through and allow you to be heard and everyone else to be heard. So I do have a list here. As I call your name, we have six chairs up here if you come forward. Ms. Angela Trainer, Ms. Sandra German, Ms. Laura Donovan, Mr. Stephen Strawn, Mr. David Frankel, and Mr. Tori Snow. If those folks come forward.
Mr. Chairman, you've got one more seat up there if you want?
Hold on, Mr. Grasso. We have other people after this for the panel, so we'll have them up. So, we're missing one person, but I'm just going to go name by name. Ms. Angela Trainer?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Good evening. Name and address in two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela Trainer, and I live at 13 Silverwood Circle, number four in Annapolis. And I'm here, I'm going to start you guys off on a light note because you have a packed house back here. So I'm here to remind you, well, let me start with who I am. I do a lot of different things in the county, but I'm here on behalf of Recovery Anarundel tonight. About three weeks ago, each one of you received an invitation to an event that we are holding next week. They came with lovely calligraphy. You couldn't miss it in your mailbox. And I've gotten some RSVPs, so thank you very much to both councilwomen that have said that they will be there. We are looking to open up a recovery community center within the city of Annapolis. I work with the recovery community. My daytime job is I run recovery houses in the city of Annapolis. Some of them are in the county. And I can assure you that each one of you that are sitting up there have recovery houses in the districts that you cover. And we just want to be able to inform you on the good things that recovery houses do and some of those things. I could talk for five more minutes, but I won't. But we want to invite you out to come out and get informed on some of the things that we're doing. We hold several different, we have four signature events in the county. We hold Hoops for Hope, which is a game between some young men in recovery and the police department. We hold the annual recovery walk right here in downtown Annapolis. We hold events like meet and greets, which some of you came to when you were running for these seats. And then we hold a dinner every year. So, we just want you to come out and know a little bit more about us. We've been around for about 10 years. So, I'll end with this. We were tasked with some priorities about a year and a half ago. And the first priority was a pocket-sized resource guide. The former administration, time is up.
Thank you.
So if I can leave these with you?
Yep, Madam Secretary's right there. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yep, Ms. German.
Okay, Sandra German, 310 Broadway Avenue, Glenburning. Chairman Pruski and County Council Representatives, I spoke about the closing of the Ferndale Firehouse at the July 1 meeting. This in itself is a big safety concern of the community, and they want their firehouse fully open and operational 24/7, especially with all the talk of everything that you're fighting for for police, firemen, and teachers. The community runs these halls, they play bingo there weekly, we do donations, and they support many other functions to help keep them open. Where exactly is this money going, and if it is not used to our community firehouse? I was told by Executive Pittman's office the firehouse will close weekdays at 5:00 p.m. and weekends. Really? Our lives don't matter? Nights and weekends are the busiest, most crucial and critical times. We have lost lives and have came close to losing many others. How many lives exactly will it take? I received an email from my council representative stating that these facts were untrue and not to send any more emails. I felt that that was very rude and disrespectful comment. I expected more help and a proper and professional response. Gambling on our lives in this area is a very risky gamble, even going by your statistics, which I have here where Northern District is the highest. Then the public became aware of this. On July 3, there was a social media post done by the Senator which informed everyone that the firehouse was closed due to a severe bed bug infestation. No one had heard of this in the community, nor did I know of this at the last meeting. I have spoke to the Health Department and the Protection Housing, and there is no record of any kind of investigation or any kind of complaint filed. The community feels that being told this by Facebook was unacceptable and unprofessional.
Thank you, Ms. German. Ms. Donovan?
I never get the right button. Thanks. Laura Donovan, 114 Glendale Avenue, Glenburning, Maryland. I'm here to talk a little bit about the airport. This morning, there was a black cloud of smoke coming from that area. I called, well, I waited for a minute to see. It looked almost like it was coming from long-term parking, and somebody's car was on fire and tires were burning. So I did eventually call to the fire department and said, "Has anybody reported it?" And it turned out that, let's see how this went, something about burning fuel in the pit. And not to worry, it happens like every two weeks. They've been doing it forever. This is the first I've seen of it, and I'm kind of concerned about it. I knew nothing about this. Fortunately, the smoke was blowing away from us. I was told that this was done, and she wasn't sure, but somewhere around Dorsey and Aviation. I don't know what this means, but I've been, for a while, when I go to different meetings, asking that perhaps we should get a tax cut for our neighborhood because of the noise. I have four broken windows from helicopters, and all I keep hearing is, "You need to get your property reassessed." I think we need to get our neighborhood reassessed, frankly, but I'm very concerned. I have a picture. It's kind of dissipated at this point. If anybody would like to see it, I can show it. If not, it's a black cloud of smoke. So, that's pretty much all I have to say today, except one more thing. I will say one other thing. Two Mondays ago, I came in here, first time I'd ever been. I'm a little concerned that I was seeing sort of like things go on the federal level. The Republicans did this, the Democrats did this. We didn't get time to do this. We didn't work together. I really hope that that gets resolved. I don't like it when I see people having their amendments blocked into a space. I don't like to see it when people had meetings over here but didn't have meetings with the other people. And anyway, so I'll leave it at that for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Stephen Strawn, last call. Okay. David Frankel? Nope. Mr. Snow, you have the floor, sir.
Tori Snow, 1307 Beltrame Court, Odenton. Good evening, members of the council. I am certain that you are all aware of the extreme disappointment that many Anarundel County residents feel for this council. Pause and reflect on the emotional testimony of one resident who wept for the inability of our council to find some agreement on a matter as important as affordable housing. As I left the last meeting, I felt an overwhelming sense of dejection. I was stunned that I witnessed a stubbornly partisan stonewall to very reasonable concessions requested by members of the council. I was certain that a reasonable compromise was in reach. I reached out to the bill's champion directly, offering to find a way to bring conservatives on board for this discussion. I reached out to the Republicans, pleading with them to find a way to get a yes vote on this legislation. I felt that the Republicans were extremely gracious with the concessions they requested. These laws are bound to have radical impact on the quality of life in our community. The symbolic rejection of every possible amendment to these laws signaled a troubling change of course for local politics in Anarundel County. I spoke with most of you on the campaign trail, and at that time, I felt that you were thoughtful people who had your ideas but were willing to do the work in building consensus. I'm specifically appealing to the Chairman to consider well his days as a minority member in our council. I urge him to reflect on his role in shaping the future of this council. To all the members of the county council, are you willing to take the steps to end the vicious cycle of partisan stonewalling? What are you willing to do to get seven votes on your key issues? And more importantly, do you have the courage and the character to try?
Thank you, Mr. Snow. This panel is dismissed. Thank you all. We're going to call up the next group. Mr. Tim Grooms. Euripse Morgan. I apologize, I'm trying to do the best I can with Mr. David Bishop and Ms. Amy Leahy. And then we'll open it up to folks who did not sign up. Mr. Grooms, whenever you're ready, sir. Name, address, in two minutes.
Tim Grooms, 411 Willow Ben Drive, Glenburning, Maryland. I'm just piggybacking off what Tori said. I just, I want to see you all work in a bipartisan manner. And I'm tired of hearing about, you know, elections have consequences and stuff like that. There's no reason for that. You guys can work together and make things happen without doing a hyper-partisan version of everything. We don't need to be DC down here. We're not DC. We're a local government, not federal government. And I feel like you all need to separate yourself from that part of government. Just be a local government, do what's good for the people of the county, and work together to make it happen. Because I don't want to hear another, in three years or whatever from now, elections have consequences again, and there's a big shift in the county council, and it just, things change too much, and then we have to go through this whole thing again. So find a way to work together, make bills that make sense, and I'm sure we all can get on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Euripse Morgan?
Euripse Morgan, 772 Cypress Road, Severna Park. So I was compelled to come to this meeting after I heard from a number of people about the discussion, or lack thereof, that occurred at the last meeting. According to Google, we are 34 miles away from the House of Representatives, where currently we have such a partisan effect that people can't even sit around a Thanksgiving Day table and share a turkey. And oftentimes, we wonder why that occurs. It starts here, it starts today, and it starts in our neighborhoods. You folks are our county council. You are also our fellow Marylanders. You are also our fellow citizens of Anarundel County, and you are our neighbors. And we expect you all to live up to your ideals and to live up to our values of bipartisanship and to be able to discuss the very things that affect most of us at a personal level. We're not asking you to change the world. We're asking you to maintain Anarundel County as being the great and welcoming county that it has always been. Now, for most of the people in this audience, they have two minutes to hold you all accountable. And they have one day, I guess every two weeks, to come to these meetings and hold you all accountable. I don't. I have two hours, Monday through Friday, on WBAL News Radio, from 1:00 until 3:00, to hold you all accountable. And I will continue to do that, including tomorrow, when I discuss some of the very bills that I know you all will be discussing today. And I sincerely hope that when I speak about this tomorrow, that it will be with an attitude of, "Look at the wonderful bipartisanship that Anarundel County has been able to achieve." Because as I said, Google says that we are 34 miles away from Washington, DC. That politics does not belong in Anarundel County. You are our neighbors. You are our council folks. But you are our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Bishop?
Thank you. Good. David Bishop, 811 Mega Vista Road, Arnold. First, I would like to thank Councilwoman Pickard for taking the time to reach out to me to discuss the meeting two weeks ago and my stance in that meeting. We still don't agree completely, but of all the points offered, she was able to at least help me understand her position on my biggest areas of concern, namely the overcrowding in the Broadneck Peninsula. So thank you. Second, I want to reemphasize that everyone wants anti-discrimination enforcement. Everyone wants affordable housing for many county employees. These are very much needed in our community. But we want to see, but what we want to see just as much is a group who will work with both sides of the aisle to get these bills passed. There are small concessions that could be made on each of these bills that would make them acceptable to all seven members sitting in front of us today. We don't see how, we don't see how much you communicate, but it doesn't appear to be happening from the outside. And I will point out that communication does go both ways. There are seven of you, not 535. Communication should be much easier here. To finish my statement from two weeks ago, if I continue to see stonewalling and partisanship and what seems to be extremism on this council, I may not be able to run against most of you, but I can certainly help campaign against you in three years. You can start by working together tonight by accepting just a few amendments for these bills on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leahy?
Amy Leahy, I'm at 712 Monmouth Avenue, Severna Park. And I don't have a written prepared testimony, but I too was very distressed by what happened two weeks ago. And I think that, you know, again, as seven people and people that are all neighbors and we all know each other, I think it's a good thing for us to be able to work together. There were several, probably eight or nine amendments that were offered up two weeks ago to this bill. And if people would have, if some of you all would have at least taken into consideration and seriously considered the very logical amendments that were proffered up, you could have had seven votes on that bill. It would have been a really easy thing to do. But no, there had to be no logic in just refusing to vote, just voting no on every single one of them. And I have been a person who's come before county councils, not just this one, but others in the past. And one of my biggest complaints is that when amendments or when bills are passed, there is always unintended consequences. Thank you, that's the word I want. And there will be many consequences of this bill that you just passed and the other bills that are before you tonight. So I just ask that you seriously consider the long-term effect of these bills as a group and be able to vote as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Mr. Grasso, now's your opportunity. If there's anybody who did not sign up or wish to speak, please come to the table, state your name and address. Madam Secretary does have a sheet that you do have to sign with your name and address. Again, this is last call for invitation audience. I see Ms. Johnson. Reverend Morris. Is there anyone else? Okay, again, I want to move it along, so if you want to come up for invitation audience, now's your chance. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Grasso, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, John Grasso, 6 Lamar Road, Glenburning, Maryland. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to talk directly to you because I don't want to offend any other council members and come across as acting like a bully or threatening. You and I have worked great together. And as you know, I was the chairman twice and was in the county council for eight years, and every election, I won by more and more votes. So I must have been doing something right. But one thing that I learned as a councilman was that every piece of legislation I put in, I looked for seven votes. It was never one of these type of deals where I'm just going to get my little Republican buddies and we're just going to have to pass it. I went out to set the mission to get seven votes every time. So I would start off with you, and I would say, talk to you about every piece of legislation that I would have, and I knew what your quirks and your things were, what made you tick, and I would carve that piece of legislation you. Then I would go to Councilman Trumpauer, and I would do the exact same thing. And then I'd go to the interesting individual in South County, Walker, Mrs. Hare's predecessor was always a challenge, and I would go with him. But I made sure that I got seven votes. What I saw at this last council meeting got me so upset that I haven't been able to sleep, basically, and my wife kept saying to me, "You gotta let it go. You gotta let it go." And I, just because of the episode that I went through last weekend, when I saw one council member offering multiple amendments, and another council member just turns around and just automatically says, "Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take amendments from so-and-so" and call it as a block." I've never seen such disrespect in my entire life. Now, I'm not going to pick on that council member because Ms. Schuett reached out to me and she says, "John, let it go. People are new. They just don't know, but I'm going to let it go." But I'm going to tell you, guys, all of you, you gotta have respect for each other, okay? And we all have different views. But to be the perfect legislation, you need to turn around and go to each one of your council people. Find out what their quirks are, what their problems are, and go for seven votes. Don't ever go for four votes. And if you can do that, we're going to be the strongest we've ever been in Anarundel County. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Ms. Morris?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Reverend Marguerite Morris. I'm at 701 Harvest Run Drive in Odenton, Maryland. I just wanted to say that I was invited tonight to kind of see what to expect when we bring before you what we'd like to do in reference to the civilian review boards, CRBs, which is, a CRB which is needed in Anarundel County. It's needed now. I want to say that many of you came to our meetings and know what it's about pre-election. So it is our hope that when it's our turn in this room, that you all will hear us out. And the civilian review board is a, the establishment of an independent civilian review board for investigating instances where legitimate complaints have been brought against police officers for the mental and physical injuries suffered by victims and/or other family members. And I just want to stress that we are not an anti-police organization. I am representing community actively seeking transparency. What we are advocating for is an organization or entity that can hear both sides of the story and make sound decisions as to whether or not they are, how to handle those individual things. So I'm sitting here looking at you. I'm sitting here letting you know that we want to galvanize and get this kind of energy behind civilian review boards, CRBs, the organization, community actively seeking transparency. Anarundel County needs it. And if you don't believe me, you watch the press, you watch the newspapers in the next few days. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Morris. Sir, name and address in two minutes, please. Thank you.
Hey, do. My name is Scott Shaner. I'm at 117 Benfield Road, Severna Park, Maryland. You know, it's funny, I love election season. Election season is the best time of every, every part of my, every, every time there's election season, you hear the most amazing promises and promises and more promises. And what I'd like to do is just a short quote out of the Washington Capital, I mean, not Washington, Capital Gazette. It was November 12 of last year, and there was a quote in here from Councilwoman Lacy. "Democratic council's not going to be a rubber stamp for Pittman to do whatever he wants," Lacy said. "I was mentally prepared to be checking Schu," which tells me that there's already going to be some opposition one way or the other, as Lacy said, "but it will nevertheless be a council that independently checks the county executive, and I'm not going to go check my judgment at the door." Unquote. You hear these promises all the time, but obviously, through this season so far, we've had nothing but rubber stamping. And do I expect to see more rubber stamping going forward? Absolutely. I see this would be a dog and pony show, and I just think that anybody coming up here is pretty much wasting their breath. So as it comes time to, for the next election season, I'm sure that some of you guys are going to be wondering what the hell, what went wrong last time you ran. And I would like to see a little bit more, you know, getting along and getting, there should be seven, seven no votes on pretty much every piece of legislation coming through. I got four kids, and every single one of my kids brought, raised to be able to, you know, let's see through the BS and see if we can really do something for the people, not just what's in your ideology. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm glad to see all these people turning out tonight because it's really important to express your feelings and your ideas. Mr. Shaner, I'm here because hope springs eternal. I keep coming back, and I hope you'll keep coming back. Doesn't always work, but I do want to thank the members of the council because I sent them an email and I told them that I have requested some documents from them that I believe are public, you know, public records. That is, there must be someplace an employee's handbook with the rules, regulations, policies, and procedures for each of the departments, one that would be widespread. And then I suspect that there are smaller documents for each of the departments, and I mentioned some of those. And it's important to me. And I really do count on your, you know, you're helping me out because I need this information. And it's not just me. Since you have, you are about to embark upon your vacation, and the number of people in this room reflect that you don't have anybody screaming and pleading and asking you to do stuff, you've got all this time at the beach where you can read all these documents I'm asking for. You know, because you can't think of anything better to do on your vacation. But at any rate, I am really interested in looking at the documents from the Health Department, because when the Health Department allows someone to reduce the setback and to put in a septic system that uses your property for absorbing the human waste from, you know, the house that's there, you might understand somebody would want to be notified about that and would have an opportunity to express concerns and interests and so forth. And then, you know, there's this group of other things. Where's the opportunity for a hearing? Where are the records of the letters that they sent to the people?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I mean, I think these are reasonable things because, the conclusion, Mr. Pruski, is that I've asked you to look at, you know, how we modify the legislation that exists.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. Thank you all for coming up. Appreciate it. That is the end of the invitation audience. The invitation audience now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda that's not listed? Seeing no movement, we'll move forward. May I have a motion that a partial reading of any bill resolution, amendment to a bill resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Secretary, could you please read the minutes of July 1, 2019?
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Delegate Heather Bagnall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. And before we go forward, we do have a special guest, Delegate Mike Rogers is here. I just want to recognize him. Thank you for coming this evening. I do want to recognize, thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes of July 1, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, the minutes of July 1, 2019. Stand approved as read. Madam Secretaries, you could please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 6319, An Ordnance Concerning Snug Harbor Waterways Improvement District: Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill number 6419, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Power, and Duties of the Personnel Officer. Bill number 6519, An Ordnance Concerning Mixed Use Districts, Commercial Telecommunication Facilities, Antennas Attached to Structures.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we have no resolutions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that's part of the record.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
If I may make a motion to hear Bill 5919 out of order and second on the agenda.
Sure. So we have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill 5919 and second place this evening. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on that motion?
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear Bill number 5919, second on the agenda, is passed.
Great. So again, for the benefit of the public, 5919 will be voted on second. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of Bill Number 5119 as amended?
Bill Number 5119, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anaronda County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Okay, this is the administration. I believe Mr. Barron and the crew are coming forward. Mr. Barron, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. For the record, Pete Barron with the County Executive's Office. With me at the table is Ms. McQuaid, Mr. McMahon from Finance. Oh, he didn't come up to the table. Okay. Mr. Hen and his associate, Mr. Gregory, External Counsel for the County, or for the County, and from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. We heard this bill at the last council meeting. As amended, Bill 5119 is the annual bond ordinance concerning the issuance, sale, and delivery of the county's general obligations bonds and bond anticipation notes or bands. Bands are issued in the form of a line of credit, which are short-term loans. I would like to introduce Mr. Hen, the county's bond counsel, who worked with the Finance Office to prepare the bond ordinance. For the record, all information was presented for the, to the county auditor for review. We had some amendments at the last meeting that I think fixed some issues with the bill, and we ask that you move the bill tonight. And, sir?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, nice to be here again on this hot summer day. This is the annual borrowing ordinance, supported by the general obligation pledge of Anaronda County. It authorizes general obligation bonds to fund projects that have already been approved in the capital budget in the appropriate amounts. It also authorizes refunding bonds that allow the county to move forward to refund if there are interest rate advantages with respect to existing outstanding general obligation debt of the county. The ordinance also, as is custom, authorizes bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the long-term indebtedness in the amounts indicated. The ordinance pursuant to the requirements of the charter requires that general obligation bonds be competitively sold, except in the case of refunding bonds where an option for negotiated sale is permitted. With those main points, I think that summarizes the ordinance before you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some initial questions for the council. Councilman Volke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question for the administration. This bond ordinance does not include any of the PPI funds. Is that correct? This is just the county general obligation bonds?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Klausmeyer. You're shaking.
Correct.
Ms. Rahn?
These are general obligation bonds. I don't know what PPI means, so I hope they're not in there. If they are, I'm not sure, that wouldn't be a good answer.
Okay, that's fair. I think those are the permanent public infrastructure bonds that were authorized by the capital budget, but I don't, I did not see those included in here. I just wanted to verify that I read it correctly. Oh, Madam Auditor?
Can I say?
Please.
So this is for the sale of the items for fiscal year '20 column, and PPI is further out?
Got you. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Exhibit 1A now.
Right.
Inspection of that would result in the conclusion that was just suggested.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other initial questions, so we do want to open this up for public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do have one person signed up, Mr. Bernard Brill. If you would come forward, please.
I'm here to testify on Bill Number 5619.
Okay, that will be later than, you had to sign up for 5119, so.
Okay.
Seeing no other movement, any additional questions by the council? The public hearing is now closed, and 5119 is amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5119 as amended.
Bill Number 5119, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anaronda County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Okay, any further discussion by council members? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5119 as amended.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Prouski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5119 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5919.
Bill Number 5919, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Notice Requirements.
Mr. Barron?
This is a council member's bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Fiedler, Ms. Pickard, Mr. Volke, other sponsors. Not sure who would like to speak.
Hi, Ken.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This bill is an effort, in my opinion, to close a communication gap between planning and development and our development community to the constituents out there. As it stands now, communities within a 300-foot radius of a proposed project are notified by mail of a pre-submital and notified several times for follow-up meetings, but then when a sketch plan and final plan are approved, there is no letter that follows up with that. It is on the responsibility of constituents and residents to go to our county website. In my opinion, that's a gap in communication, and this bill is an effort to increase transparency and lower the amount of human error in our current setup.
Okay, Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank Ms. Fiedler for bringing this bill forward. While it does cover a communication gap that I have also discovered in my district, I would like to work with the administration over the recess in the coming months about looking at the overall process of notification in regard to all sorts of development processes. And we've discussed that, and so there'll probably be a larger package of things coming forward.
That's correct. Sorry. Pete Barron with the County Executive. With me at the table is Mr. Hager and Ms. Tompkins from Office of Planning and Zoning, and Ms. Klausmeyer from Office of Law. The administration fully supports this bill. We do have a couple of amendments that we'll offer at the appropriate time that hopefully are friendly. And I just want to say to Councilwoman Pickard's point, we're happy to work with all council members as we address a lot of these communication and transparency issues. I think this is a great step in the right direction.
Okay, seeing any, no further discussion, why don't we open this up for public hearing? Folks will have two minutes. Remarks will be limited. We have Ms. Leahy signed up. If you would come forward, please, to speak on 5919.
Amy Leahy, 712 Monmouth Avenue in Severna Park, Maryland. And I'm here on behalf of Greater Severna Park Council and the Vice President in Charge of Public Affairs for the Severna Park, Greater Severna Park Council. And we are in support of this bill that has been put forward by Councilwoman Fiedler. We had a certain situation in Severna Park where a community was on top of everything that was going, that was going on with a certain development, and then it just slipped through the cracks. Sketch approval was done. They were not notified. It was a very concerning project because it affected Cattail Creek. The community was very upset that even though they had been in complete and constant communication with people over in planning and zoning, an employee left was the excuse, but they were not notified even though they kept asking repeatedly if the sketch plan had been approved. So that's, that's what prompted us and to work with Councilwoman Fiedler to get this particular bill put forward because it certainly will help to improve transparency and close that gap that she was referring to. So we just ask that you pass this bill, support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not sign to which to speak on 5919? Please come forward at this time. I see Ms. Johnson. Again, if there's anybody else that would like to come forward, please do so.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I support the general direction of this bill and the support that you, that you're, you know, that you're all, you seem to be providing, but it's not enough. I'm old. I've been here a long time, and I have seen some really awful things happen because people are not informed about what's going on. Yes, this, this council is working with a 300-foot notification, but if, you know, if you look at Herald Harbor where there are 900 homes, you know, there's, you know, there's a long distance away before notifying other people who might be impacted by certain events and certain developments and changes. So I would really encourage you to expand the, the areas that you include where you require notification of the impacted property owners. And I will just give you a quickie example that when I moved to my home in the Annapolis area, Biscuit Road was a road that had one lane eastbound and one lane west, you know, east and, one lane each way. Well, Dog Art came in, and they built 200, 2,000 homes on it. They put in all kinds of traffic lights. Used to be when my ex left home in the morning, he got from the EP church all the way up to the Crownsville Hospital. No traffic lights along the way till you got to the hospital. I've lost track about how many traffic lights there are now. It's dual lanes. The impact on the community is dramatic, and there just was not adequate notification for making realistic community responses. So that's just one example, but everybody knows a bunch of others. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I do not see anyone else, so we'll have the public hearing on 5919. It's now closed. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Number 5919.
Bill Number 5919, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Notice Requirements.
Last minute thoughts, questions? Okay, we do have amendments. Oh, Ms. Rodvian, okay. Just want to make sure. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendment Number One?
Amendment Number One, this amendment requires a developer to mail notification of a sketch plan approval to the county executive.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I see this is joint by the county executive and Ms. Fiedler. Not sure who would like to speak to Amendment Number One.
I'll let the administration.
I want to thank the councilwoman for working with the administration to include this improvement to the bill, we believe. This adds the county executive to the list of folks who get noticed. This is to make sure that the constituent service department has, is also aware, if you'll notice in the bill, council members will be notified as well. Will get the mailing. This is just to make sure that everybody can work together and has the same information. So with that, we hope you will support the amendment.
Okay, any further discussions on this amendment? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Prouski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment clarifies that a developer must send notice of approvals to certain property owners with a copy to certain community and homeowners' associations, the Office of Planning and Zoning, and appropriate council members.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is being offered by Councilwoman Fiedler. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just in, trying to clarify some language that could have been interpreted a different way. When planning and zoning approves a project and it goes to the developer, the need for the developer, whoever that is, to send it back to planning and zoning is not to let planning and zoning know that they've already approved it, but to let them know that the letter of approval has been sent out to the parties in the bill.
Any discussion by council members? Administration, Mr. Barron?
The administration supports this amendment.
Great, okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Prouski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Okay, those two amendments, since they were passed, this bill will be heard at the next council meeting after the August recess on Monday, September 3rd, 2019, 7:00 PM. Moving along, Madam Secretary, please read the title, Bill Number 5519.
Bill Number 5519, An Ordnance Concerning Fair Housing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to move to reconsider the vote on the motion that, that I made to consider Amendment Numbers 3 through 19 in this bill as a block.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, just a point of information because some people maybe weren't here at the last meeting. The hearing concluded past midnight, and it was not voted on at the last meeting, so it's rolling over. So essentially, we're stopping where we were, and now there's a motion on the floor to reconsider the block. And a vote, motion of no is to go through them individually. If you vote yes, we keep the block. So I just want to make that clear to everyone so you understand.
Actually, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, there'll be two votes coming right now. This first one is the motion to reconsider the vote on the motion to do it as a block. So this motion needs yeses.
Okay. I'm glad you keep me straight, Ms. Secretary, Madam Secretary, and the AC is not working, so that's a good public announcement for everybody to move this along.
Yes, they're working, they're working on it.
All right, good. So we have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded to reconsider the block vote. Is there any discussion on that?
Oh, I just wanted to say, these amendments really, we made decisions on voting at this block, I think probably 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, so I think a lot of us were just very tired. And I think after reflection, bringing this back to give it a little more time and consideration is really appropriate. So thank you for bringing this motion to reconsider.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Lacy?
I'll be first of a 7-0 yes.
Okay. Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Prouski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to reconsider the vote on the motion to vote on Amendment Numbers 3 through 19 as a block is adopted.
Okay. Do I have any other motions?
Now, we will need to do the vote that we have just decided to reconsider. So we will be voting on the motion to vote on Amendment Numbers 3 through 19 as a block. If you wish to do them individually, then you need to vote no.
Correct. And this is where the yes/no comes in, if we vote no. So we're clear, okay? Any further questions? First of all, we need a motion for that motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
No.
Mr. Volke?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Mr. Prouski?
Nay.
Zero in the affirmative, seven in the negative. The motion to vote on Amendment Numbers 3 through 19 as a block is defeated.
Thank you. Now we will go through each amendment individually, have discussions, and move forward. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment removes ancestry as a basis for discrimination and substitutes the term ethnicity as a prohibited basis for discrimination.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Volke?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with respect to this particular amendment, I, in reading the bill, saw the term ancestry and was a bit confused by that term, and in doing some dictionary work, I sort of interpreted that ethnicity might subsume the term ethnicity and therefore, excuse me, ancestry and be a better definitional term for this bill, which is why it's being proposed.
Administration?
Sure. Evening again. Pete Barron with the County Executive's Office. With me at the table, from ACDS is Ms. Koch, from HACCA, Cliff Martin from Law, Ms. Klausmeyer. So with respect to this amendment, we looked at a number of different nondiscrimination laws across the state, even across the country, I believe, and, and the ancestry term is in them. We feel that it's appropriate. I can defer to folks at the table if they have anything additional to add, but I understand what you're, you're trying to make it clear, but I think ancestry is, is an appropriate term.
Any questions from council and administration? Okay, Madam Sec, oh, sorry.
Actually, I'm sorry, I keep jumping in late. I don't know if the Office of Law could answer this question, but how do you view the difference between these terms? Or I could turn that question back to the sponsor. Anyone who's willing to answer.
I'm happy to let Office of Law answer.
Well, I'm not sure I know the difference, so I will let the sponsor, what he intends, anyway.
Sure. What I understood ancestry to mean was more of sort of a lineage, if you will, or one's direct ancestors, in a sense, whereas ethnicity was more of being part of a larger cultural group. And so to me, that was why the ethnicity term seemed to be more appropriate, because it encompassed a larger category of people, if you will, than the ancestry term, which suggested almost just a direct lineal descendant.
But you would posit that ancestry is included within the term ethnicity?
That was my understanding, and that was what I was going for with this.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is ethnicity also used in language in other bills in different states, or?
Yes, ethnicity is in other fair housing ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to support this amendment, because I believe ancestry is actually the broader term to ethnicity. I think the common parlance and understanding of that word is clearly broader. If you were to, you know, go to ancestry.com, that's the broader thing, not to mention, I think, just from my practice as an attorney, and not as something I've heard directly from the Office of Law, but from what I've read in court opinions, it's the broader of the two terms, and therefore, that's what I prefer to use.
Ms. Schewer, our legislative counsel, would like to chime in?
Yes, for whatever it's worth, about two and a half weeks ago or more, I did a relatively thorough search of the meanings of these two words, and concluded that the one does not subsume the other, that it can in certain circumstances, but not in all. So that's it.
Okay, any further discussion from administration or council? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Three?
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number Three is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four, this amendment removes creed as a basis for discrimination.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
So with respect to this term, again, in my review of the bill, I wasn't able to find similar statutes that use this as a basis for nondiscrimination. Particularly, I looked at the Fair Housing Act at federal level, and then I looked at the state, and I didn't see it included in either of those. I also didn't see any corresponding definition for what creed meant, and how that necessarily differed from religious views or beliefs, which, again, I believe, subsumes creed. This is my belief, on what this word means, is that you effectively have these religious beliefs which could include creed inside of that. Again, I think reasonable minds can differ, and so it's very possible that others would say, "I don't see it that way," and it's necessary to reiterate, but that was my purpose behind this amendment.
Once again, Pete Barron with the administration. We respect the point of view there. There are local fair housing ordinances in the state that use the term creed. Again, the intention in the drafting of this bill, we were looking at making sure, and maybe the sponsor can speak to this, that we were as inclusive as possible. So with that, we respectfully would like to keep it in the bill and ask the council to resist the amendment.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To reiterate, I also think creed is broader than religion, although religion historically certainly has a big basis for having been a basis on which people were persecuted in this country in our history. They were also persecuted for political beliefs, other beliefs that could come under the term creed. And so it is, in my mind, appropriate as the broader term.
Any additional comments? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Four?
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Four is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five, this amendment removes citizenship as a basis for discrimination.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with this particular amendment, I actually got an interesting email from a constituent, and I asked him, well, he's not my constituent, but he is a resident of the county. I asked him if I would be able to share some of his comments just publicly, so that folks can understand from a landlord's perspective what some of the questions might be that would arise with having a nondiscriminatory basis of, quote, "citizenship." He stated in there, "What are specific categories intended to be protected by this law? Must they be green card holders, student visa holders, et cetera? Must they have a legal right to stay here longer than a month when the lease is to be signed for a year? Is one able to reject an applicant because their stay in the country will expire prior to the term of the lease? What if one says that they'll stay here anyway? Must they be here legally? How do we enforce the terms of a contract or judgment against someone who is not here legally? Are we talking recognized citizenship on a federal basis, on a state basis, on a county basis? It's not well-defined or thought through." And that's the concern that I have with this, too, is that I think what is actually being intended by this is to indicate that there is a nondiscriminatory, or there is a prohibition on discrimination with respect to legal status or lawful status here in the country. That's what I'm assuming is actually being targeted by this bill, as opposed to the term "citizenship." Because, again, it's really a status question, is what it seems like more to me, is what the administration's trying to get at. So I'm not sure that this has been fully vetted or defined in this bill, and that's a concern for me. And I don't like saying to people, "You can't discriminate on the basis of this category," but then not telling people what that means. I think that creates ambiguity for the landlord, and it's going to be difficult to enforce. And then, with the corresponding bill that we're going to get to later this evening, with respect to the Human Relations Commission, we're ultimately going to be ceding a lot of that interpretation authority to an unelected body, who is then going to have to figure out what some of these things mean with respect to their investigatory capacity. So for me, I would prefer to either, one, see this removed from the bill, or, two, have a clearer definition included in the bill, so that people who are being bound by this law know what in the world they're being bound by.
Mr. Barron?
Understood. Pete Barron, County Executive's Office. We respectfully ask the council to resist this amendment. And to that very point, I understand the very legitimate concerns of the landlord. Nothing in this bill prohibits the verification of the ability of the tenant to pay. So you do not have to count income that is not lawful. So if somebody is not legally able to work in this country, they would not possibly be, they should not be able to show that they have lawful income. Additionally, there are a number of categories of folks who are here lawfully, who can work, who could pay rent, whether it's a work visa, a green card, or what have you, and we feel that citizenship is an appropriate protection here, because it is about whether or not the person, the landlord shouldn't be in a position of discriminating or deciding whether or not somebody is a citizen or not. It's whether or not they can pay the rent.
Anything else? Councilwoman Hare?
I have something, but you have to tell us who's up.
Well, actually, before we do that, does anybody at the table have anything to add? Because I saw you.
None.
Okay, Councilwoman Hare had?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm wondering, then, if perhaps you can answer the question that came through on this gentleman's email. What is the administration's position about someone who comes in who perhaps has a month left on a student visa, or a month left on a work visa, but wants to sign a year-long lease? How should the commission, who would be responsible for interpreting this, what's the administration's position on that? Can you say, "No, I won't sign a lease with you," or would that constitute discrimination under your interpretation of this bill?
I would defer to better lawyers than myself, but if you can't prove that you can pay the rent, then you can't, they don't, that's not a discriminatory rejection of someone's tenancy.
So is it your position, then, that someone who has a student visa or a work visa that runs out during the pendency of the lease would be deemed to be unable to pay the rent once their student visa or work visa is up? Is that a fair assessment?
Kathy Koch, Executive Director for Ronda Community Development Services. Other thing is that landlords, it's their decision if they have a year's lease or six months' lease. So if you can't sign a lease legally for that term, then the landlord has the right to not choose you as their tenant.
So then that would not be considered discriminatory under this bill?
That would be his right to set the terms of his lease.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So while I understand the intent of wanting to clarify, I am concerned that this amendment just removes citizenship altogether. So we have lots of people here in the state of Maryland, whether they're working at NIH, or lots of folks here from out of the country. I have neighbors that are back now in Canada with the Canadian military that are not, were not citizens, and they lived here three years. So that is the intent, but this amendment removes it. It doesn't seek to define it better, so I can't support the amendment as written.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to add that, as a practical matter, citizenship isn't traditionally asked by a lot of landlords, because their focus is on getting paid, not on where their tenant is coming from. But secondly, to answer the constituents' question, or at least to try to address it, you know, if you were to rent to somebody who then leaves the country, you had a valid contract with that person, there are legal remedies available to be pursued. You would obtain a judgment in the Anorral County Circuit Court because you had this contract with this person. Then you'd have to take that judgment and enroll it in a foreign jurisdiction, which, by the way, is actually, if they just moved to Texas, you'd have to go to court in Texas and enroll that judgment against them and pursue credit, same thing if it were international. So those remedies already exist.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, Mr. Barron, I wanted to follow up on some things that you mentioned. It sounded to me like it was more of a source-of-income sort of statement that you were making when you were talking about people having income, and whether they're here lawfully and have the ability to work or not. That sounded more like source-of-income than a citizenship. Was I missing that, or am I right with where you're going with that?
No, I mean, that was definitely part of my statement. But I think that we, when the administration and the sponsor of the bill talked about what we wanted to put before this council, it was an expansive protection for members of our community who are living here to be free from housing discrimination.
Okay, and one of the things that I heard my colleagues say, which I agree with, is most landlords are... Interesting. One of the things I heard my colleagues say was that most landlords would care more about where they're getting paid than whether you're a citizen or not, and are they going to get their rent money. And I tend to think that's a fair statement for anybody who is, you know, paying month to month, trying to ensure their mortgage is paid as a landlord. I guess, then, what my follow-up question would be is, have we heard a lot of complaints that there are discriminatory landlords on the basis of citizenship? Because I understand what you all were trying to get at, but, again, this isn't covered by the federal Fair Housing Act, this isn't covered by the state Fair Housing Act, so I'm just trying to understand where the problem is that we're solving at this point, and, again, with a term that I'm confused is not clearly defined. I'm just trying to get that.
There is no protected class in this legislation that doesn't exist in some other fair housing legislation across the country and across the state.
Sure, I get that.
So has there been a deluge of complaints on this? No, not that I'm aware of.
Because I can understand some of the other grounds that you all are looking at, and the reasons for some of those, and where you may have gotten complaints from individuals saying, "I've been discriminated against on this basis." But on this one in particular, I'm just not quite clear where it came from, other than other jurisdictions.
Well, I mean, from, I think, the administration's point of view, any discrimination is unacceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on Amendment Five, discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Volkey?
Just want to, before we vote, I understand where the administration is going with this, but I also share concerns about the definition of citizenship, and because we don't have an amendment before us tonight that clarifies that for those who are renting out properties, I have concerns that this particular language has unintended consequences, so unfortunately, or I will be supporting this amendment this evening.
Okay, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Five is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Six.
Amendment Number Six, this amendment removes occupation as a basis for discrimination.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Back again. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, again, this would remove the occupation basis for discrimination, similar statements to the citizenship amendment that we just dealt with. One of the interesting things that was brought to my attention, even after I had concerns about the definitional problems with this, and the lack of, you know, is there really a problem on this or not? Are we seeking to find a solution for a problem that's not there? In addition to that, someone brought to my attention that, in fact, this may create problems in places where we currently use incentives with respect to housing, and it may now cause an issue. So, for instance, if you are a landlord, you could say, "I would prefer to rent to a teacher. I would prefer to rent to a police officer, or a firefighter, or something like that." Well, if you were to put that preference in currently, as I understand it, at both federal and state law, there's no prohibition on that. But at this point, we are now going to introduce a prohibition on occupation as a basis for discrimination, thereby actually reducing the ability to offer those types of incentives to the exact people that we're saying we want to be helping. So I think this bill, again, has some unintended consequences on this portion, which is why I would be seeking to remove this from the bill. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pickard, did you want to add before the administration, or?
Oh, go ahead.
Once again, Pete Barron with the administration. We respectfully resist this, ask you to resist this amendment. Understand the points raising. I don't believe we agree that it will have that unintended consequence. What I will say to this is there are, I believe it's Howard County has this protection, they've had it for a long time. I think it's been in their statute for 15 years or so. So I just don't see it raising that concern. I think if it had been a concern, it would have been raised by our neighbor and yanked out of their law a while ago. So with that, we respectfully resist this amendment.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I did chase down that concern, and was, given the opinion of the Office of Law, Mr. Greg Swain said that this does not interfere with the incentives, like if you have an apartment building close to the hospital, doesn't cause a problem if you're trying to, you know, give first month's rent or something to the hospital employee, that sort of thing. But we are mixing some messages in this conversation tonight, in that this is about housing discrimination. 5519 is about housing discrimination. It's not about accommodating our workforce. So there are, this is about everyone, and how we choose as a county to proceed with fair housing, not necessarily just for police, fire, and teachers. So I just wanted to clarify that with this bill. We've moved on to a different topic.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I second what Councilwoman Pickard just said, but I'd like to add that as an illustration of the difference between, say, someone of an undesirable occupation becoming your tenant versus someone of, who may be eligible to some sort of additional incentives or preferences based on their occupation, lawyers and politicians are probably not your preferred tenants, okay? Enough said.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, Mr. Swain is not here. Ms. Klausmeyer, you have the joy of answering. Can you enlighten me on why this would, why incentives would be a permissible basis and would not qualify as discrimination? I'm sort of confused by that.
So, and I did not see Mr. Swain's communication, but I'm assuming that the answer is that you aren't saying that you will not rent to a particular person because they're in a particular occupation, but if you have some type of occupation, as was pointed out, that in some ways, in other words, you have a preference that's in some way related to the housing stock or something like that, that that would not be, you're not discriminating against that person because of their occupation. I mean, that's not, that's kind of the opposite of discrimination, I guess.
Yeah, I guess that's where I'm sort of baffled a little bit, because I'm looking at, I'm just trying to look at the dictionary definition of discrimination, and what exactly discrimination would be, and I don't understand how by giving a preference, you're effectively treating people differently, which is generally what discrimination, or non-discrimination laws, I should say, are aiming to prevent, is to say, "We're going to treat everyone the same across the board." So I'm not sure how by offering an incentive, you're thereby not discriminating.
Mr. Chairman, may I jump in just to say, to maybe give a different example to frame the question, a different type of example is a sales incentive. Someone could go, say you want to go, you know, buy a new car, and you bought that same kind of car before, and you prove it, and they offer you a loyalty discount. That loyalty discount has to be available to everyone, on the one condition that they have bought that car before, bought that model before. So that's kind of another way of saying, you know, can you buy it because you're a lawyer, or can you buy it because you've bought that kind of car before and they want your business back? Similarly, with the kinds of incentives that this council would be empowered to offer, essentially through our budget, through our public policy, through the county agencies, where we will be able to incentivize landlords making properties, you know, giving some kind of discount, or we have various ways of doing that through the government, through the county government, in a positive way, that's not discrimination and not a preference, it's not based on that person's characteristic.
And if I, I'm sorry, if I could jump back in, because you said something about the dictionary definition of discrimination.
Please, yeah.
But we actually have a different, we have a definition of discrimination in this bill, which is acting, failing to act, or unduly delaying action because of one of these things, such as occupation, and it has to adversely affect the person. So giving someone an incentive is not an adverse effect. So I think based on, you know, you're right.
That's an excellent point.[649.29][649.29](Laughter) You have a definition in here that helps to answer the question. Fascinating. I love it.
Because the, you know, I agree with you, the dictionary definition, discriminating may be good or bad.
Right, right, right. But you've now gone beyond the dictionary definition to define it in the code, which would then...
As an adverse effect.
Right, but that would actually supersede the definition of the dictionary, because now the code has said, "This is how we're going to define it to treat it."
Yes.
I like it.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to make sure, hypothetically, I have a condo and I'm going to rent it out, and I have two applicants, and one is a teacher and one is not a teacher, and I have put forth a stated preference, 10% rent discount for teachers or something. You are saying that's kosher.
What you can't say is that you won't rent it to someone...
I'll rent it to anybody, but I give a 10% discount to teachers.
Who is a teacher. So you can't discriminate on the basis of the occupation.
But I can have a stated discount for all teachers.
You could have a discount for teachers.
Okay, all right.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
Okay, so this has raised a new question for me, this concept and conversation about incentives, because when we're talking about incentives based on a particular occupation, things seem pretty innocuous, but then if we move to other categories that we've said are unacceptable methods of discrimination, imagine a scenario where, for example, someone wanted to offer an incentive based on race. To me, that should not be appropriate under the law, and so maybe there's some way, some aspect under which we need to clarify that incentives, like maybe we need to set up some several, some separate legislation regarding incentives, and how incentives, and what categories are appropriate for incentives, because I can think of a whole slew of categories that would not be appropriate, I think, in all seven members of this council's eyes. So I would just offer that maybe that's something I will, we can work together to look at legislation to determine what kind of categories would be appropriate incentives and what would not.
Ms. Schuett, counsel.
I think that the response that we just got on the question, on the last question, answers this question, because if you say you want to rent your place to only those people of color, and that's it, you're not discriminating under this section, because the person of color isn't being adversely affected in the area of housing, it's actually being helped. I don't think this applies to incentives.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think to follow up on the point that Councilwoman Rodvian's making, and then what Ms. Schuett just said, so if one was to take it to, let's say, the citizenship for a moment, in the event that a landlord was to say, they're not going to be so obtuse as to come out and say, "I'm not renting to non-citizens," but they could say, "I will give a preference to a citizen, I will give them a 10% rent discount, or I will give the first month free." I think that's the concern that Ms. Rodvian's getting at, that potentially you could be tying into one of these classes that we're saying, "We don't want to discriminate on that basis," but effectively you're building in an end run, by the way that you've defined discrimination, to allow incentives but not disincentives. I don't want to mischaracterize your position, but I think that's where you were going.
I don't think the intention of this bill is to provide any kind of end run.
I will commit to working on additional legislation to make sure that we maybe define what categories are appropriate for incentives and what are not, because I think if we are saying that some categories would be acceptable for incentives, or just, again, it's not discrimination in that, you know, both have the opportunity to rent the apartment, but if one has the opportunity to rent it at 10% lower than another, and we say that 10% is lower based, is acceptable based on occupation, but I think everyone in this room would say that differentiation is not acceptable based on differences in other categories, so I'll commit to working on that legislation and putting it forward.
And if I can just say, I mean, we now have a month and a half, this bill's, you know, potentially going to be amended, will be back, we can certainly look more closely at this question and what the, if there is, needs to be a fix. I will tell you today, I was turned down for a car incentive because my credit score was too good, believe it or not. If you have a bad credit score, you got $500, but if you had a good credit score, you didn't.
Do you want to repeat that for the public?[942.01][942.01](Laughter) Councilman Volkey?
The only thing I would say is, I think exactly what Councilwoman Rodvian's hitting on is almost an inverse discrimination, is effectively what these incentives would lead to, and I agree, I don't think that any of us sitting up here are looking to do that. So I think that's, that's what we need to figure out and sort of look at the other side of it, because again, when we're taking these terms and defining them, these are potentially the unintended consequences of that.
Okay, any further discussion from the council members, administration? Madam Secretary, could you please call the role in Amendment number six?
Can I just add one? I'm sorry, I keep jumping in at the last minute, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, but I would, I would observe that with this language in the current text of the bill, in the proposed bill, removing occupation as a basis for discrimination, we should, in theory, be avoiding the incentives, at least until we clarify that, because, I don't know, maybe this is where the Office of Law comes in, is an incentive not discrimination?
Well, I think that's the discussion that we've been having and saying, "No." I think the bigger concern is discriminating against someone because of their occupation, not renting to someone because of their occupation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the role in Amendment number six.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment number six is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please call, please read Amendment number seven.
Amendment number seven, this amendment removes source of income as a basis for discrimination and as a definition.
Motion to adopt. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, turning back to that correspondence that all of us received from, I should note that for the record, the gentleman whose email I'm citing to, he did email the full council, so everybody had the benefit of hearing this and hopefully reading it. But with respect to the source of income component to this bill, I think that one of the things that was noted to me that's most problematic about this is, there are additional constraints that are imposed by way of a landlord accepting federal housing vouchers. Those vouchers come with additional terms that a landlord must be willing to accept. One of the most interesting things that I heard from this person who knows much more about the program than frankly I do, and if anyone up here wants to comment, I'm happy to hear it, but apparently you get paid at the end of the month, as opposed to the beginning of the month, for the landlord. That was what was noted to me. I see everybody shaking their head, that's not the case. Okay.[1118.15][1118.15](Laughter) Well, then I'll set that one to the side for a moment. There was also the question of, so for instance, in Maryland, we have now allowed medical cannabis as an acceptable industry. At the federal level, that's not been legalized, is one who works in a medical cannabis dispensary and receives money from their profession covered by this, because source of income only covers lawful income. So are we looking at lawful income as defined by the federal law, by the state law? Where are we turning to on that? I don't think that's clear with this. Additionally, this person made a point about prostitution, which frankly, we don't have here, so I'm not going to go into that one, but I think, sorry?
Legal prostitution.
Well, yeah, exactly. No, no, I'm not saying altogether, thank you, thank you.
Let's focus here.[1167.99][1167.99](Laughter).
Can myself sidetrack. Yes, but we don't have legal prostitution, unlike places like Nevada, where that would be a legal source of income. So if one derives their money from that, then are we saying that it's acceptable to discriminate against a person on that basis? And I think the way that this bill is written, that would be an acceptable ground for discrimination, and I'm, again, I just don't know what policy statements we want to be making with this, but I think we need to be cognizant that whatever we pass is a policy statement, one way or the other. So I think that that's something that we need to look at. By the way, I just want to clarify, I'm not advocating prostitution as an occupation.
Nor am I.
Thank you.[1206.73][1206.73](Laughter). So I just have some concerns about the source of income. I always have had those concerns, and I think that there are, even if the payment does not come at the end of the month, there are certainly additional riders, additional components that are involved when one takes money through the federal government with respect to housing. And I think that imposing on a small landlord in particular, these sort of requirements may potentially be onerous, to the point where we actually wind up with the inverse of what we're looking for here. So here, we're trying to get fair housing, and we're trying to increase the supply of affordable and fair housing, and frankly, if you're a small landlord who's now looking at being required to comply with all of these different legal statutes, you may say, "Enough is enough, forget it, I mean, I only owe one or two, own one or two units, I'm not going to do it, I'm just not interested, there's too much of a headache with this." And frankly, the fines are huge if I violate it, so I just don't want to get into that business. And then you have the inverse effect of what you wanted, which is you've now decreased housing stock. So I'm concerned about that as well, and that's something I've heard from people who are smaller landlords.
Councilwoman Hare, and then the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to echo the concerns, particularly with a small landlord, someone who owns one or two units maybe, and that the, a requirement to participate in this program that may involve a good deal bit of extra paperwork, it's potentially a longer time before they get a tenant in there, which maybe means less money, that there is, you know, additional concerns with what happens if you don't get paid, and I have heard, although I don't know if it's 100% true or not, that the sort of amendment or the addendum that comes to the contract has limitations on eviction for not payment, if the payment's not timely from the government. I do worry about the person who maybe has a townhome that they're renting out, and they're underwater on it, they're renting it out because maybe they couldn't have sold it, and they are not making a big profit on this, they're just trying to cover their mortgage every month, and that maybe this would be a real trouble for them to have to participate in this program, and that for that small landlord, we're going to put them in a, in a real precarious situation with this requirement.
Pete Barron with the administration. First, I'll put the small landlord issue aside, because there will be, I'm sure, amendments dealing with that. This amendment specifically removes source of income from the bill. Other jurisdictions across the country, 12 states, 75 cities, counties, District of Columbia have had, have similar laws, and they work. The administration's not unsympathetic to the needs of landlords, but you have to weigh that with the need to find housing. We have, and Mr. Martin can tell you in great detail how long our waiting list is, and how difficult it is for folks with vouchers, which is the general concern related to the source of income provision, how difficult it is to find housing. And so with that, not unsympathetic to the concerns, however, this simply is whether or not source of income should be protected. This works in other states and other counties, including here in Annapolis, they have this protection. It is not a magic bullet for ending concentrations of poverty, or people being able to find housing, but it does make the situation better, and frankly, everybody needs a place to live. And there are many folks on, in these programs, a good chunk of them, and Cliff can give you the real numbers, a good chunk of them are disabled, a good chunk are elderly, a good chunk are families. It is extremely difficult to get one of these rental assistance programs, get into one of these rental assistance programs, and they're extremely carefully guarded by the residents who get them. And to be clear, nothing in this bill prohibits a landlord from determining the renter's ability to comply with lease terms or pay the rent. So you can verify the amount, you can evaluate the stability and security of the renter's income, and you can evaluate the renter's tenant history, credit, criminal background, and suitability. So as long as you're applying those tests in a nondiscriminatory way, you can verify that, if you're verifying that for everybody. So while we understand that the point of this amendment, the administration respectfully asked the council to reject it, and I will turn it over to Mr. Martin if you have anything to add.
Yeah, I can get really deep in the weeds here, if you want to. Cliff Martin with the Housing Commission, I've been administering this program for 30 years in this county, and I can tell you, I could spend all night separating myth from reality when it comes to the Housing Choice Voucher Program. You know, we have, you know, within a few numbers of 2,000 families that are currently in the county on the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and it's not nearly enough. The wait for a voucher is more than 10 years. That is the truth. We opened the waitlist today for the first time in five years, and I'm sure, thank you for my clap, and I'm sure we'll see even more staggering numbers coming with that. What, you know, some of the myths are, you know, the Housing Commission has heard testimony regarding this for the last 10 years, and I've testified on the state level many years, and I really have kind of been the whipping post on this, and so I've heard and dispelled many of the myths about this program. And you hear something like, "You get paid at the end of the month." No, to be quite honest, the housing assistance payments are paid on the second business day of the month electronically, straight into their bank accounts. We pay it faster than, than most of the renters do, and we pay $1.6 million a month to landlords all over this county. We're probably the largest rent payer in the county and the fastest rent payer in the county. So really, just the opposite. Most of our landlords are mom and pop landlords, we have over 400 sprinkled throughout the county. And so if I was going to say that these were strong concerns, I couldn't imagine we would be seeing numbers of this level of, of small landlords who actively do participate in the county. You might think that's a great thing, but the problem is, because of what happens to the renters in this county when they're going out with their vouchers, most of them are congested in certain districts and certain census tracts, and that's really not fair. In a recent survey that I just did with many of my voucher holders, 76% of them told me that they have been discriminated against solely because they have the voucher in hand. And that, you know, is something that has to be dealt with in this county, is blatant discrimination, blatant, for people who are the poorest people in our county. And yes, 33% of my voucher holders are elderly, 37% are disabled, and over 40%, or nearly 40%, are persons with disabilities, I have a person with working income. So these are the working families, these are our elderly and our disabled, who are out there every day looking for units in areas where they grew up, in areas where their grandchildren are, in areas where they worked, and they're not able to. And so, you know, these things are impacting this program dramatically, and so I can get as deep as you want in all the practicalities of the program, but on a day-to-day, we see it, we face it, and it's unimaginable in this county, in a county like Anorondle, it's unimaginable, some of the stuff we hear on a daily basis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pickard, and then Councilwoman Rodvian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Martin. We've spent some time together understanding the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and I know this brings out passions on both sides of the issue, and I'm not, I'm not immune to those conversations, but we have 300,000 households in Anorondle County, and we have 2,000 on the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And one of the things that this bill is trying to do is break the status quo in Anorondle County and get us to where other counties are. We are a growing county, we are a formidable county, and we should be able to compare our county code with Montgomery County, and Howard County, and Frederick County, and look at where we, we want to be. This does not expand the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Often, folks who are unsatisfied with a renter is not a Housing Choice Voucher tenant, and it's time, it's time for this county to get up to speed on, on affordable housing. This is a small, small step. It doesn't solve our housing issues, it doesn't break the cycle... It doesn't solve our housing issues, it doesn't break the cycle of poverty, but without it, we move nowhere. We move nowhere with helping. You'll know, as a former Board of Education member, we like to blame the achievement gap on our schools. The achievement gap and our issues with our children are based on stability of their home life. And housing having to be forced in and out of low-quality shady housing is a huge factor that upsets our student population, our young people, every single day. And this is a part of this bill that has to remain. And I know it's not going to be popular with all folks, but I also don't think it's the, the end of the world. The sun will still rise tomorrow, you will be able to be discerning with your tenants based on lots of other criteria, and you will be able to avoid this program if you so desire.
Councilwoman Rodvian.
I just wanted to point out the unique nature of being a landlord, and I'm going to start out by confessing that I am myself a landlord. I was not a landlord by choice, but my husband and I purchased a home in 2007, and if you do the math, you know what happened to the value of that home we purchased a year after we purchased it. So, we became unwilling, unplanned landlords, because our house lost so much value that we were unable to sell it as we had planned. This is the only property that my husband and I own, except the one we live in now. But the fact is, when I think about, okay, when I put myself in the shoes of the landlord and thought, well, how would this impact me if I were a landlord? And I, I would admit that, you know, there may be challenges to it, it does mean extra paperwork, or whatnot, complying with the program, but every business has certain requirements that you have to comply with. And when we're talking about a business that provides such a basic need, I think it's reasonable to expect that the requirements are going to be a little bit different than other, other types of businesses. We're talking about something that every single person in this county needs. There is not one person in this county that can get by at least well, they cannot get by well if they don't have a roof over their head. It's one of those basic things that you need. And so, if you're a person providing that service, I think it's very reasonable to expect that you have some, that you meet some requirements as well. I was grateful to Mr. Martin, because I really didn't have a good understanding, one way or the other, of how, you know, how the program worked from this, from the perspective of landlords, and I was really surprised to hear, well, I won't say surprised, I learned that it actually works very well, and there's landlords out there that actually, you know, are, are glad to have Housing Choice Voucher tenants, because they become extremely reliable tenants. So, I don't think that this is a burdensome thing to place on landlords when we're talking about a basic, a basic human need. And that's why I can't support this. I think this is one of the core pieces of this bill, talking about source of income. And the need is great in Anarundel County, and in, while it would be wonderful if we could expand the, the size of the voucher program, because obviously, the waiting list, you said it's 10 years, and how many people on the waiting list?
Well, we had closed the waiting list because it had gotten over about 15,000 families, or about 60,000 citizens of this county, or residents of this county, get my terminology We had closed it, and so, it had begun to shrunk, shrink over time, because a lot of those families found housing elsewhere over the five years. But we've opened it today for the first time, and I would be surprised if it doesn't triple in size by the end of the year. So, and it could be close to 7, 8, 10,000 again.
And I'll just close by saying that any burden that my husband and I might suffer as a result of, you know, the extra requirements of, to participate in the program cannot possibly match the burden on a family who has no place to go, or an individual who has no place to go. And so, I just can't support this amendment. Thank you.
Councilwoman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just, I want to commend my colleagues, because I think this is exactly the type of debate that I was looking to have two weeks ago, and I appreciate everyone coming to this, and with a diversity of opinions, putting them on the record, having the discussion, and doing it in a completely respectful way. So, I want to commend everybody for that. In the end, whatever way this amendment and others go, and I realize that this sparks very, very, you know, central to many people's core, I do think that, I appreciate the way this has gone. I do want to ask one question that, Mr. Barron, you had mentioned, there are 12 states, does Maryland currently include source of income as a basis for nondiscrimination?
It does not, hopefully it will next year.
Okay, but it doesn't currently. All right. And then the other thing that I would just sort of make as a general comment is, if this program is working as well as everyone states that it's working, then my belief in how life works is that other people will look at that and say, man, things are going so well, I should take these vouchers as well, because that is such a great program for me. And so, I don't think that we should have to legislate that. And again, I think that's for a lot of things, like, we would all like to sit up here in a sort of Pollyanna universe and say, people should just act in the right way. But my point with this is, if in fact, the program is working that well, and landlords are that pleased with how the program goes, and getting paid on time, and everything like that, then I don't, I, I'm not sure why this would even need to be something, no one would discriminate against people for this. So, I think what this shows, by virtue of this, is not that it's an acceptable basis to discriminate against people, and I'm not trying to say that. But what I am trying to say is, I do think there are additional administrative burdens that are clearly involved with this, and that I think we, as the council, by voting for this and including this in this bill, will be imposing on people. That's one of my major concerns with this, is what this does to the small landlord, the mom and pop shops. Again, I get that 400 of the landlords are accepting these housing vouchers from the federal government, but I'm assuming that there are thousands upon thousands of landlords in this county. In a county of 600,000 people, just about, there are a lot of landlords. So, I think that's a small percentage, and I think that gets to my point of, there are additional burdens that are not necessarily being acknowledged, and that we are going to place on these landlords. So, I just want to leave that there.
Councilwoman Lacy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to just, to follow up about this administrative burden. One of the reasons, when we were initially discussing this bill, and discussing specifically source of income, and whether source of income protection was something we saw as central to the bill, as a key element of the bill, that, that was a discussion that, you know, wasn't, wasn't that brief, it wasn't just dogmatically accepted, but we really did think through it. And one of the things that has not been persuasive to me about the, the requests from landlords, has, about the administrative burden, is that it has been unquantifiable. Nobody, I haven't seen anything from anybody saying, you know, here's how much this, this additional burden would be on me, or is on me, whether I'm a small business, or a small landlord, mom and pop type, or I'm, and even the large, the large leasing companies haven't provided specific figures about what the additional administrative burden actually costs them to participate in these programs. By analogy, and I certainly hear the concerns of, say, somebody who has, who has purchased a townhouse and went underwater, and I, I think I've got a fair number of neighborhoods in my district that would be in this situation. So, these, these homeowners may be renting their townhouses just to be able to cover their mortgage, but pragmatically, that can't be a reason to, to, to say, okay, countywide, we're, we're going to not protect source of income discrimination. I mean, when you, most of the people who would be underwater would have obtained a mortgage, it was probably a 30-year commitment, and with no guarantee of how the economy would change over time, how their incomes would change over time. And so, they had to assume some risk, and they had to have their eyes wide open when they went and got that mortgage. And frankly, since that economic crash, they would have also had several opportunities to refinance their mortgage and bring down their monthly payments. So, I don't, I don't see that argument as, as really being real, because what I think this bill is really about is protecting the people seeking housing. This bill is not about, at its core, protecting landlords from having to rent to certain people based on characteristics that the landlord don't, doesn't like, doesn't want. It's about making equal opportunity for everybody to, not only to rent, but remember also, to be able to purchase. This, this bill, if this amendment were adopted to delete source of income, then that, as an impermissible basis of discrimination, that would apply to sales as well as rentals. And then all of a sudden, you have unintended consequences, I would think, that would, that would then find, you know, our veterans, or people who, who are otherwise eligible for government assistance-type programs to be able to make their mortgage, they also then could be discriminated against. So, this is not a partisanship thing, to me, this is the core of the bill, and I can't support this amendment.
Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm just about done. I may have misspoken earlier when I said something along the lines of, that you get paid not at the first of the month, but at the end of the month, because when I'm looking at the testimony from the gentleman who'd sent it to me, he said you actually get paid at the beginning of the month following the lease starting. Is that correct? Do you get paid month one, or do you get paid the first, the second day of the month after the lease starts?
So, under the first month, if the client lease is up sometime in the middle of the month.
Sure.
You can get the payment anytime thereafter. On the first, on the first of the next month, you will receive that month, and if you're doing anything from the prior month, you'll get all of that retroactive. So, you're never without the money. During that very first month, yes, until we get the payment process for you, it will come in that first month usually. But it depends on, someone moves in on the 28th day of the month, or the 22nd day of the month, probably not, but early in the month. But to this notion about that, we're, we're not a huge program, we're not a giant bureaucracy, and that building relationships with landlords is really critical to the success and integrity of the program. So, every case with a landlord is a case-by-case, what are your needs? And we do have owners that say, let me explain how quickly I need this money. And we hear that, and we can do it, but I have to remind you, there are three parties in this program, not just the Housing Commission.
Sure.
The landlord and the renter have to get all of their stuff together, there's three of us. And so, as much as we would love to get that payment to them, it's onerous, they have to get their stuff to us, too. So, there's three of us. And sometimes, it's not the Housing Commission that's the delay, it can be the tenant, it can be the landlord, so all three of the things. But we take each one on a case-by-case, and if a landlord would come to us and say, let me explain a financial hardship, then we're going to work as fast as we can. Unfortunately, sometimes we don't hear that, and we don't know that, but it's incumbent upon them to communicate that to us. But we take them all case-by-case.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 7.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Herr.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number 7 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, just a point of order before we go on. This is a reminder that we cannot pass any bill past midnight for the discussion, and there's a lot of people here for other bills. I want to be cognizant of them. Again, I'm not trying to limit discussion, but I ask that you consider that, you know, as we move forward, because we do have 12 more amendments on this bill alone. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 8.
Amendment Number 8, this amendment removes any type of government assistance as a source of income.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I will just say, this is a more limited version of the source of income removal. This simply removes as a part of the definition of source of income governmental assistance.
Any discussion, administration?
I want to first second the comments Councilwoman Volkey made about the discussion. I think this is healthy. In the interest of time, I would just like to say exactly what I said before, and everything that everybody at the table said.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 8.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Herr.
Aye.
And Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number 8 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please call, or, excuse me, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 9.
Amendment Number 9, this amendment removes gender identity or expression as a basis for discrimination, and amends the definition of sexual orientation to specify gender and include external appearance, expression, or perception of gender identity.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the intent of this, obviously, one reads it initially and says, oh, you're taking out gender identity and expression. Actually, the intent of this is to try to include those within the definition that already exists in the bill with respect to sexual orientation, but to make it a broad enough definition that this would be subsumed. So, that is the intention of this particular amendment, is again, to define what exactly gender identity or expression mean in a clear and cognizable way, so that those bound by this will understand what it means.
Questions from the council, Mr. Barron, administration?
Respectfully, understand the intent, and do appreciate the fact that you're not trying to remove gender identity. When we were drafting this legislation, again, going from the perspective of including as many protected classes as was possible, I, I think one thing that folks might say is, gendered identity or expression is not necessarily sexual orientation. And so, I understand what the, the intent of this amendment, but don't think it's necessary. I think gender identity or expression is a distinct subject.
Councilwoman Lacy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can concur, obviously, as a sponsor of this bill with, with the administration. I speak to add that maybe a helpful concept for thinking about this particular category is the famous Supreme Court decision that defined obscenity. What is obscene under the First Amendment? And they said, you know, we know it when we see it. And I think in, this amendment would, would actually hinder the interpretation of the bill, in a sense, versus, versus the other sense, and that's why I prefer that.
Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess what I'm trying to get at is what the next few amendments are getting at, definitional concepts, and I've been trying to get at that all along. So, I would certainly appreciate it if the administration, or any of my colleagues, had a particular way that they thought this could be written, so that it does actually include this in a cognizable way, that we could look at that as an amendment. Because to me, again, you're, you're telling people that they're going to be bound by these certain things, we need to make sure we know what that means.
Any further discussion, administration? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 9.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Herr.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number 9 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 10.
Amendment Number 10, this amendment adds a definition of familial status.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This simply defines familial status as it's already defined in the government article in the state code.
Mr. Barron.
Again, appreciate the intent, don't think this is necessary. I think the, the attorneys would interpret this correctly. So, don't think this one or the next two that just refer to state law are, are necessary.
Any further discussion?
No strong opposition, though.
Councilman Volkey.
The only thing I'd say is, the, the problem that I see with this, you don't define it in the bill, and if you don't define it in the bill, it's not defined in the code, it's not defined anywhere else. If it's not defined in the code, then one has to go to what the common usage of these terms are, and then we get to interpretation. And again, we're giving an awful lot of authority in another bill to an unelected commission, and I would prefer to see this body take on the mantle of our legislative prerogative and define certain things.
Councilwoman Pickard.
I also discussed this with both counsel for the, for, counsel for the council, and the Office of Law, and it was pretty clear that we do not define every term in every bill in the code, and so, this is not necessary. And so, it's, I don't believe it's necessary.
Any further discussion, Councilman Volkey?
Oh, no, sorry, I was ready to vote.
Oh, okay. Administration, nothing else, again, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 10.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Herr.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number 10 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 11.
Amendment Number 11, this amendment adds a definition of marital status.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey.
Same as before. Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Eleven is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Twelve.
Amendment Number Twelve. This amendment adds a definition of disability.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
At the risk of sounding cliche, same as before.
Administration?
Same as before.
Any discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Twelve.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Twelve is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Thirteen.
Amendment Number Thirteen. This amendment adds an exception to the proposed county fair housing laws for the sale, rental, or occupancy of housing to public safety officers and their households.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This and the following two amendments, so there will be three total, effectively go after what I think is, what it seems like the administration is trying to do, which is to help some of the people who live and, who work here, excuse me, live here. So with that, similar to the Veterans' Preference that's already built into this bill, which indicates that the bill does not apply if one is a veteran, the same would be true for the next three, which are public safety officers, public school employees, and county employees.
Administration?
Appreciate the intent of the sponsor and would be happy to work moving forward. An issue was actually raised specifically with relation to folks who are employed by the county, that this could run afoul of some ethics codes, using the prestige of your office, and Ms. Klausmar can speak a little bit more to that. I would, if we are going to be taking a harder look at some of these incentive questions, I think this should definitely be part of that discussion. Because when I first read this amendment, I want to support it. However, unfortunately, it does, at least as we're reading it, as the lawyers are looking at it, the concerns around ethics about using the prestige of your office raise the concern. The veterans exemption is different because they are not county employees.
So my name was used in vain there, so I will, yeah. So the police officer one does seem to be more general, and I think it is something that needs to be looked at in terms of the incentives. I know I had a, Imlo is having a presentation actually tomorrow on fair housing, and I got their PowerPoint, and they talk about that you can allow, legally allow, certain preferences. For example, in the familial status situation, it's not discriminatory to have a preference for families with children, as opposed to discriminating against families with children. So this may be, that kind of looked at in that broader picture. However, the other two, which would be 14 or 15, which have not been read yet, but the one is specifically for employees of the, I'm sorry, employees of the Board of Education, and the other one is any employee of the county. Years ago, I know there was, and I believe it was an informal opinion of the Ethics Commission, I certainly don't want to talk for Mr. Batseris, and the Ethics Commission that dealt with giving a county employees a discount for gym memberships or something of that nature, and that was found to be a violation of the prestige of office provisions of the Ethics Article. So before, you know, other than that, I don't have any legal comment on this, but I think that it would be something that the Ethics Commission would have to weigh in on as to whether it is in fact, this type of thing would be in fact be a violation.
Who was offering the gym membership discount?
I don't remember. It was not Mr., it was not, I'm trying to remember. I don't know if it was a specific gym, or it was a gym that was, it might have been when the 24-Hour Fitness opened up at, down here at the town center.
And so by a non-public employee offering a discount gym membership to county employees, there was an ethics violation?
Yes, because the ethics law says, as a county employee,
Yeah.
You cannot use the, what they call prestige of office, which is basically your position as a county employee
Understood.
To get a financial benefit. So it wasn't that they were offering anybody who was a police officer, like, or anybody who was a schoolteacher anywhere, but it was specifically geared towards county employees.
So if this were to say, an employee of a Board of Education, as opposed to the Anaronda County Board of Education, that would absolve this ethics issue?
You'd have to talk to the, I mean, we're not the ethics people, but I would certainly talk to them.
But you're offering an ethics opinion, is what's happening, effectively.
No, 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 I'm saying what the Ethics Board has said in the past.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that's the situation that we ran up against.
Gotcha.
I'm not saying one way or the other. So it's something that they would definitely need to look at. The other one that came up was even giving, and I don't know if there was an actual opinion on this or not, was giving free admission to county residents to the county parks. That was seen as a prestige of office type of issue. So anything that you get that gives you financial benefit by virtue of your position as a county employee is, has the potential to run afoul of that provision of the ethics law. So the one, like I say, you know, the first responder type of preference or something like that, just general, more general, like you're talking about, you know, Board of Education, that may not be an issue. But again, I don't want to speak for the Ethics Commission, other than what they've done historically.
So just playing this out legally, assume the council gives an affirmative vote to this, it goes into the bill, it's there, Ethics Commission looks at it and says, oh my goodness, you can't do this.
You can't do that.
So then now what? The bill doesn't become invalidated, you simply wouldn't be allowed to do it, or this council would have to take up subsequent legislation to amend it, I would assume.
Yes, it would be invalid, and that provision
That provision would be invalid.
Would be invalid.
But the rest of the bill would stand as passed. There's a severability issue there.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Councilwoman Hare?
She answered my question, actually.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Thirteen?
Ms. Lacy?
Because I prefer to address these issues via a separate bill than passing with the question of whether or not this would be sufficient to, under the Ethics Code, I vote no.
Ms. Pickard?
No.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Thirteen is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Fourteen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I make a motion? For the, just purposes of efficiency, could I request that we bundle Amendment Number Fourteen and Fifteen? Because I believe the discussion we just had would apply to these next two amendments if the
I'll second Councilwoman Rodvian's
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to bundle Amendments Fourteen and Fifteen. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
I'm going to call the roll. I think the motion would probably more properly be worded to do a motion to vote on Amendment Numbers Fourteen and Fifteen as one.
As a block, yes.
Yes, a block. All right, so is that the motion?
So moved.
So seconded.
Okay. Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on Amendment Numbers Fourteen and Fifteen as a block is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendments Fourteen and Fifteen?
Amendment Number Fourteen. This amendment adds an exception to the proposed county here, fair housing laws for the sale, rental, or occupancy of housing to employees of Anaronda County Public Schools or Board of Education and their households. Amendment Number Fifteen. This amendment adds an exception to the proposed county fair housing laws for the sale, rental, or occupancy of housing to employees of Anaronda County and their households.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've already discussed these, so.
Administration, anything to add?
Just to reiterate, we stand ready to work in the future in any kind of separate bill to address these issues, because are sympathetic to the intent of the sponsor.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate my interest in this topic through separate legislation. Okay, see, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, as a block for Fourteen and Fifteen, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Numbers Fourteen and Fifteen are defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Sixteen.
Amendment Number Sixteen. This amendment makes a violation of county fair housing laws, a Class A civil offense under Section 92101 of the Code.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a pretty straightforward amendment. Under the Fair Housing Act, the penalties for a first violation are a little over $25,000. Second violation in three years, I believe, is $52,000. Third violation in five years is $105,000. These are pretty substantial sums of money. This would amend the bill to say that the fines and penalties are at maximum what's allowed in our current code under a Class A civil fine, which would be up to $10,000. Still quite a bit of money, but nowhere near the almost six-figure sums or in excess of six-figure sums allowed by the Fair Housing Act. I think this is appropriate for this county, and I would ask my colleagues to support it.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked Ms. Schuet if you could comment and hopefully enlighten all of us. Looking ahead to Bill 5719, which would create the, or codify the Human Relations Commission, I see that my colleague intends to introduce an amendment that would be, in essence, as I understand it, identical to the effect of this one in Number Fifteen. And since, my understanding is that Bills 55 and 5719 together would create a comprehensive legislative scheme, then my question is, do we need both? Is one better in one place than the other?
Are you asking the sponsor or Legislative Council?
I'm asking Legislative Council.
Okay.
I don't think we need it in there twice. And whether or not it's more appropriately in the fair housing law itself or in the part relating to the commission is debatable, I guess, but I think it's preferable to have it in the, whoops, the bill that creates the Human Relations Commission. Because they will be the ones deciding that's what kind of penalty, if you will, is appropriate under the circumstances. But that's really a policy choice as to where it goes, it's not a legal choice, doesn't matter where it is legally.
Okay.
Councilwoman Pickard?
But isn't, if we pass 5519 with one set of penalties, right, I think it needs to be here.
Oh.
Two sections in the Code.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand the question completely. I thought you were asking, the same provision right now is in both.
Right. But if we were to change that provision in 5519, I think we need to change it in 5519, and we need to change it in both. Because if one, if we don't, if we didn't accept this amendment, and then we go and change it in 5719, it needs to be
There would be a conflict.
It absolutely needs to be the same in both.
In both, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Hare?
Nope, that was going to be my point, too, that we didn't want to have a conflict between the two.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you. Would agree about not wanting a conflict. So we looked at this when working to draft the legislation. The administration made a policy choice in coordination with the sponsor of the legislation that we wanted this bill to have, quote unquote, teeth. I think this amendment would still keep some of the teeth, but there would be less teeth into the bill. Our preference is to keep the bill as is, but I believe this is an appropriate policy decision for this council on what the penalty should be.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lacy?
Yes. Also, hopefully, Councilwoman Rodvian will return before we vote. But I wanted to clarify, I think, I agree with the administration, and I think it's definitely true, it is a policy choice that this council is being asked to make, and I think there are arguments for both. One, for saying that the types of enforcement mechanisms that are provided under federal law are appropriate to use as a model here. I also think there are arguments in favor of saying, you know, we don't need them to be that strict to accomplish the goals of this legislation, and since I feel that, in a sense, it could go either way, we will be able to see over a period of time whether or not this legislation produces the intended results, I am happy to support this amendment in the spirit of bipartisanship, but also knowing that I will intend to support it on 5719, so we're consistent in our two bills.
Thank you. And just a comment, I know I don't want to belabor the meeting, but I want to thank
the sponsor for bringing this forward. I think one of the things that I brought up earlier is that there's an expectation that as we change these laws during the budget presentation and the Housing Administration, that you will be reporting back to this council on the efforts that we have passed, good, bad, or indifferent. And certainly, any policy or financial changes can be made at that time. Certainly, you know, there's some things being brought forward here, but I think that all of us would agree that we'd like to see what the changes have occurred, what violations, and obviously, we can make any appropriate changes also at that time. So, I just want to make sure that's part of the record as well. Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendment Number 16? Call the roll.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 16 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendment Number 17?
Amendment Number 17, this amendment removes refusal to negotiate the terms of sale or rental of a housing unit as a prohibited activity.
Motion to adopt. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this gets to my definitional concept, so I won't belabor the point on this, only to say that I'm not clear exactly what refusal to negotiate means in the context of this bill. Does it mean you refuse to pick up the telephone? Does it mean you refuse to sit down with a person? What exactly does this mean? And again, if we are creating these prohibited actions, and we are creating a mechanism by which people may, thankfully, now face fines of up to $10,000 as opposed to $100,000, I'm just concerned about the lack of definition on some of these key components in terms of this bill. This was one that stood out to me as being particularly problematic, because it seems like it's almost a vague or ambiguous term, open to interpretation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Oh.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one, I believe I had asked a question about this provision in the last meeting. This one, it does seem a little bit ambiguous to me, particularly in light of the testimony earlier tonight, that the landlord has the ability to set the terms of a lease and whatnot, and a refusal to negotiate on those could be for any number of reasons. I understand that you have to look at this in coordination with the definition of discriminate within the bill itself, but I do see this as a potential ambiguity in the bill that would subject the landlord's tenants and the bill itself to a lot of scrutiny and potential sort of unnecessary litigation in front of the Human Relations Commission and then potentially court. So this one, I struggle with this one, just based on what we've heard earlier tonight.
Administration?
So, with respect, if you look up on Page 3 to line 13, it's a person who sells or offers to sell, rent, offers to rent, controls, constructs, or manages housing may not discriminate by refusing, then you go down to Number 3, refusing to negotiate for sale or rental of housing to a member of a protected class. So, to me, I don't see the ambiguity that the maker of the amendment sees. I think if you come in and I negotiate, and somebody in a protected class comes in, and I treat them differently in terms of refusing or directing them, it's a thing that has happened in real estate before bad actors say, "Well, you should maybe just go to a different neighborhood." There's issues like that. I don't think, it would have to be pretty egregious, I think, for a court to uphold a Human Relations Commission decision on this basis. And there are documented cases of folks negotiating with one group and not negotiating with another. So, with that, understand the point, but respectfully prefer the bill as drafted.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just note, under the prohibitions in Section A there on Page 3, there are nine prohibited, basically, actions. And I'm looking at one of them and saying, "That's the one that I can't necessarily wrap my mind around, what in the world this means." The other ones, I agree with you, they're pretty self-explanatory. Making, causing, making, printing, publishing notices, et cetera, representing certain things. All of those make sense. This one, pretty unclear to me, and that's my problem with it. And that's all I would be looking to clean up, is either to take it out, or if we're going to come back, let's get an amendment so that we can get it right.
Any further discussion? Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Pickard?
I'm not an attorney, but I feel like this, when we use the term negotiate in this bill, we're talking about entering into any sort of dialogue about the potential to rent the property. Is that, that's how I read this. It seems, it seems sort of basic to me.
I would agree with that.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 17.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 17 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 18.
Amendment Number 18, this amendment adds an exception to prohibited acts that, under certain circumstances, would exempt a private individual owner of no more than three single-family houses from the provisions of this title.
Motion to adopt. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This particular amendment is equivalent to what we have at the federal law already. It's called the Miss Murphy Exception. Basically, it says that if an individual is effectively a mom-and-pop shop or a small landlord who has three or fewer single-family dwelling units, that that individual would not be subject to the prohibition set forth in this bill. So, again, I would be looking to try to mirror federal law with this. That's the purpose of this amendment.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just sort of for clarity, the way I understand this, and I think this was the intent, is that if you own three single-family dwellings, presumably, one of those is owner-occupied. So, really, you're seeing, in all likelihood, although I suppose not necessarily, you would be seeing a situation where potentially, somebody is renting two of their units. And to get at our conversation earlier, the small landlord, you know, I think we need to try and strike the right balance between the needs of the county as a whole and the individual small landlords. I think this amendment in particular helps to strike that balance, particularly in light of some of the other amendments earlier that were not passed, such that there can be more support, more bipartisan support behind this bill, if there is a small landlord exception.
Mr. Barron?
So, understand the Miss Murphy situation, and the administration is unsympathetic. I go back, and I think Councilwoman Rodvian said it more eloquently than I will be able to, that if you are renting property, you have to accept certain burdens. We require fire extinguishers, a kitchen, heat, water, those factors. And while I understand the concern, nothing in this bill would prevent Miss Murphy from verifying that she will get her market rate rent, and that the tenant can pay and has a good rental history. So while I understand that concern, we believe that the bill is addressing a real need in the county, and preferably would like to see the small landlord who is in the business of renting to have to abide by the same rules.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 18.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 18 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 19.
Amendment Number 19, this amendment adds an exception to prohibited acts that, under certain circumstances, would exempt the sale or rental of owner-occupied dwelling units from the provisions of this title.
Is there a motion to adopt? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar to the last amendment, this amendment would say, effectively, if you own a home and you decide to rent out a room or a living space in your own home, that this bill would not apply to you. That would be with respect to no more than four families occupying a dwelling unit. So, again, I think this is sort of targeted at trying to exempt people from the requirements of the bill that are really small landlords, if you will, that are just trying to maybe rent out certain portions of their home. And I think this makes sense.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just for clarification, the bill as written does not incorporate rooms, the rental of rooms. This is not about boarding houses. This is only dwelling units which have separate entries.
Correct.
So that's not necessary in this, because the bill doesn't, already exempts rooms, if you're looking for a roommate. I do have some sympathy for the owner-occupied home. Maybe it's my femaleness. If I were to own a home and I turned it into four apartments, I would want to be as discerning as possible for my own comfort and safety. But other than that, I just wanted to point out that rental of rooms is not, is already not part of this bill.
Administration?
Just a second. The rental of rooms issue is not the, is not intended to be covered by this bill, and we checked with Office of Law to make sure that if you are, if you're in a roommate situation, that's not covered by the bill. And there's a lot of good reasons why, and we could go through some hypotheticals. I would just add, in terms of like, the owner-occupied situation, where there's maybe a house that's been subdivided into three apartments, I would just like to repeat my comments, just less stridently, from the last amendment. I do have very, I am very sympathetic, and to Ms. Pickard's point, to a, somebody who is having to share a wall in their own house, but it would require to be a separate dwelling unit. So, with that, I mean, this is a great bill. Without this amendment, even with the amendment, it would still be a great bill.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, I echo Councilwoman Pickard's comments and the administration's comments, but as this Amendment 19 is written, it would say that it does not prohibit discrimination in the sale or rental of rooms or units in dwellings containing living quarters. And I think already, within that line, that's very, to me, problematic and confusing. Living quarters is not defined, and when you apply this, you can't sell a room or a unit that is not somehow objectively independent from other units or rooms within the same dwelling, meaning it would need to have presumably some sort of meal preparation space, as well its own sanitation facilities, and most importantly, you know, separate locks, separate doors, separate ingress and egress. So to me, although I understand the concerns, number one, I don't think the bill is creating that danger, and number two, this would just confuse the situation, and so I can't support this amendment.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, let me just ask this question to the administration or Office of Law. My grandmother, who died a number of years ago, she had a house. It was a split foyer. The basement was closed off. You could get there from the inside, but it had a separate entrance on the outside. She rented that regularly. She had someone in the basement. They had separate ingress and egress with a kitchen area, a living room, all of that. This bill applies to her, doesn't it?
I believe it would be, because you're not sharing the dwelling unit.
Right. So, her renting the basement of her home with a separate entrance and all of that, at that point, this, this would, this amendment would take care of that. This would say it did not apply to her. But absent this amendment, this would apply to her.
So it's a sanitation, all of that's there. I believe that's correct. And I would say, nothing would prevent Grandma from verifying criminal history or rental history or all the stuff I've listed before.
Okay.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just picking up what Councilwoman Pickard said before, if I were living alone in a home and I had a basement apartment, I may prefer to have another female live in the basement, or at least, you know, I think this amendment, particularly in the case of a grandmother or something like that, who may prefer to have, you know, either a female or maybe another retiree or something like that, I think this is certainly something that makes this bill stronger.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think another analogy might be helpful here, which is that, to that of, say, requiring universal background checks for purchasing firearms, or for, you know, in general, say, let's make a criminal background check free to run on everybody who might become a potential tenant. I don't think there's, if the Grandma's basement apartment has, you know, sufficiently strong locks, for example, I mean, our Grandma puts in a surveillance system on the outside of the apartment, okay, not the inside of the apartment. I don't, I don't see this, I just don't think Grandma's in any more dangerous of a position or in any greater risk than somebody who generally might have somebody come into her house, you know, and shoot Grandma. I mean, it just, I don't think that's the boogeyman that it sounds like, based on this amendment.
Ms. Schuet, counsel?
I just have a question for clarification purposes. Is the situation currently being described, allowed under the zoning code? Or is it only a, you know, we have the in-law suite that you're allowed to have. Are you allowed to rent out the basement to someone else?
I was looking to see if Ms. Rhodes was here, because she's the expert on this. But, you know, we have various definitions of a semi-detached dwelling, which would be a structure contains two dwelling units side by side with a common wall. That's kind of the, the...
It's not the basement of a house, though.
Not the basement of a house. Now, that could be a duplex, which is two dwelling units, one on top of the other. So, whether or not they're permitted depends on where they're located. Duplex, to me, means side by side, but in the code, it's one on top of the other.
Right. Built as two units, one on top of the other, for a full family in each one legally.
If they have permanent provisions for sanitation, cooking, eating, sleeping, and other activities routinely associated with daily life.
Okay, thank you.
So, and then where they're going, and then zoning is going to depend on where they're, what zone they're in, whether that's permitted.
Councilwoman Pickard?
So, the, so while this amendment is a little confusing, the main bolded words are owner-occupied units in dwellings. So, I feel like I can support this as, in its intention, is if you are, if you have a home, you've divided it into four apartments, and you live in one of them. You can't do that? Well, you can do it in other places. You can't do it in Anaronda County?
When we, when the code, there were a lot of complaints about the fact that you couldn't rent out your basement, or you can't rent out your second floor. And as a result of that, years ago, there was a provision added to the zoning code that allows you, it's got specific, it can be over a garage, but it can only be a certain number of feet. And other than that type of extra place for your, supposedly, your in-laws or really anybody to live, you can't, you can't do what we're talking about.
Oh. Well, I was going to vote for Amendment 19, but if it absolutely doesn't make sense, then I can't vote for Amendment 19.
Point of information, Montgomery County Council is having the same debate right now. And just to record, regardless of how this goes, this will probably be another discussion of policy in terms of zoning, as we go through the GDP, about how many people live in a house, what's allowed.
Exactly, right.
So, again, we're kind of veering off. I know, let's focus on the amendment, but I do want to state that this will probably be another policy decision.
But, I'm sorry, I just wanted to confirm, Ms. Schuet. So there are situations allowed where this can happen with a garage apartment or something like that in the county currently?
You could have a relatively small place for another family in a single-family dwelling, period.
And this would address that? As an exemption?
Not, well, if your house was built as a single-family dwelling, then it's legal as a single-family dwelling. If it's built legally as a duplex with one, a place to live here and a place to live here, that's okay, too.
Okay.
But if your place was built as a single-family dwelling, other than that one circumstance, you can't rent out your basement, you can't rent out your third floor, you can't do anything other than that one, and that is generally built either with the single-family dwelling or is built later, and often over a garage.
So Grandma's in trouble?
Pardon me? What?
Sorry, Grandma's in trouble.
That's why I wrote him a note, saying, "Your Grandma has a zoning violation."
Just point of personal privilege. My grandmother died in 2011, so I don't think you can do anything. But, but, I'm making that point. But with that said, I just want to clarify, Mr. Barron, am I recognized, Mr. Chair? Sorry, I jumped in.
Yes, you are.
This doesn't hurt the bill. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? What I heard the administration say is, this doesn't necessarily do anything in your mind to help it, and it doesn't necessarily do anything to hurt it.
I think there would be, you could come up with a case, we could play hypotheticals, where somebody has a garage, a legal garage apartment, and intentionally discriminates against a protected class. And I think that's offensive and shouldn't be allowed in Anaronda County.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just to clarify in my mind, if someone does have a home and they want to turn it into a four, four separate apartments, couldn't they apply for non-conforming use, and could it be approved, or?
Do you want to take that, Ms. Blair, or do you want me to?
It had to be legal at the time of the, you know, the time it was divided. I mean, if you did it in 1952, and it was legal in 1952, then you're okay for non-conforming. But, I mean, I guess that you end up with some kind of zoning variance, maybe is your best shot, but I don't know if that would ever, I'm not even sure if that would be possible.
Okay, thank you.
So, for a point of information, serving on the Board of Appeals, that case always comes up. Non-conforming are generally things that happen before a code or something's implemented, and that's why it's non-conforming. I would hope not, that this current county would be approving non-conforming use at this point, because we'd like everybody to be within whatever the code is. Now, certainly, the code could be changed, as we discussed, but nobody would really, you know, do that for that fact. So, yeah. Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment 19.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 19 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 20.
Amendment Number 20, this amendment provides that an owner of a rental housing does not discriminate...
Guys, I'm trying to get through this, believe me. Please.
Amendment Number 20, this amendment provides that an owner of a rental housing does not discriminate based on source of income so long as the owner sets aside at least 5% of the units to be rented by persons whose income includes assistance under the United States Housing Act of 1937.
Motion to adopt?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How, since we voted on this identical amendment as Amendment Number 1, or at least I don't see any difference, so how do we have grounds to hear this amendment again?
Legal counsel, Ms. Schuet.
I'm sorry, I'm not positive I heard your question, but I think that the difference between this amendment and what we've heard previously is that this one says you don't have to do the whole voucher thing, so long as you have 5% of the rental units for persons whose source of income does include assistance under the federal guideline. So, it says, it's a, if you have 5% set aside, basically, for those who have vouchers, you're okay with not accepting vouchers with respect to the other 95%.
I appreciate that, Madam Counsel, but I'm, my question is, when I look back at Amendment 1, which was introduced by Ms. Fiedler on July 1, 2019, the text is the same. I can't perceive any difference between that and Amendment Number 20. And since we already voted on Amendment Number 1, I'd like to know what is our basis for hearing Amendment Number 20?
Mr. Chairman?
Just, Councilwoman Fiedler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My understanding was renumbering it and reintroducing it was enough. And in light of the discussions that we have opened since our meeting two weeks ago, I wanted to go back and revisit this, now that we have discussed the source of income, the other two prior amendments. And this is in a little bit of a different position now, in my opinion.
So, we haven't moved it second and to adopt. Is there a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Again, in light of discussions that have happened here this evening, both amendments for source of income, to remove those... for source of income, to remove those failed. So this is really an attempt to still protect the small homeowner who is renting out four units, one that they live in, or 20 units, not the 500-unit operation, and protect them a little bit by creating a floor of 5% that they can rent out with the source of income from government assistance. If they choose to go beyond that, that is up to them, and if the program's really working for them. It sounds like we have a lot of circumstances where landowners are happy with that, or landlords are happy with that. But this provides a little bit of protection that after 5%, they can choose to say no to those vouchers.
Counselwoman Pickard?
Okay, I will just reiterate what I said on July 1, because while I understand you're discussing the smaller landlord with 20, or, but that's not how it reads. So this would apply to all rental housing, and since we only have less than 2,000 voucher holders and more than 28,000 rental units in the county, we're already at the 5% threshold, and I just don't see how this helps.
The administration, our position has not changed since July 1.
Any further discussion on this amendment? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 20.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment, excuse me, Amendment Number 20 is defeated.
Okay, Bill 5519, as amended, will be heard at the next meeting, which is Monday, September 3, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. I do want to, for the benefit of the public and everyone here, that the amended bill comes back again on the 3rd for a hearing and a vote, but the bill expires on September 6th. So any amendment that's put on the September 3 bill, the bill will die. So I want to make that clear, that September 30, either the bill gets voted on up and down, if there's amendments that are passed, obviously, the bills die. But I just want to make sure everybody understands, because we have the August recess and, you know, moving forward. Moving along. Bill Number 5619, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5619.
Bill Number 5619, An ordinance concerning purchasing project labor agreements.
This is Administrationville, Mr. Barron and the crew.
Good evening. For the record, Pete Barron, with the county executive, with me at the table, is Ms. Klausmeyer from Office of Law, and Mr. Heim from Central Services, our procurement officer. So we discussed this bill at the work session. This bill simply removes a ban on PLAs. Anarundel County is the only county with a complete ban on PLAs. Project labor agreement, just to, so everybody knows, and we're working with the same term, project labor agreement is a comprehensive labor agreement between a project owner, in this case, it would be the county, or a construction manager and local building trades. They're typically used on construction projects to establish uniform terms and conditions of employment for the project workforce. Any qualified contractor can bid on a PLA. Anyone willing to work under the terms of the agreement is free to apply for work on the project. Federal law prohibits employers from discriminating against employees, whether or not they are union members. So, PLAs can have multiple components to them. They can include benefits that provide job opportunities for community members, so local hire provision, minority, women components. They can include provisions around safety, workplace safety, project efficiency, health and safety provisions dictating safety practices, provisions for apprenticeships, provisions for pay and benefits for the workforce. They are able to establish uniform work hours, holiday schedules, and dispute resolution procedures. None of those factors are mandated for PLAs. One, any project labor agreement will be different from the next. The purpose of this bill is not to mandate project labor agreements, it is to remove the ban that Anarundel County put in place in 2012. We have some technical amendments that we will, or, excuse me, a technical amendment, just one, that we will offer at the appropriate time. With that, I know we have a number of folks from the public who want to speak on this bill. The administration is happy to answer any questions, and if there are any amendments to this legislation, happy to comment on them at the appropriate time.
Counselwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start with the fact that you said that Anarundel County bans project labor agreements. We talked a little bit about this at the work session, but when I read the plain language of this clause, it's not a ban on project labor agreements in their entirety. I see a ban on a contract requirement for a project labor agreement. That's not to say that a project labor agreement couldn't be proposed by a bidder and eventually accepted and used by the county. I also see that the ban is limited to those project labor agreements in which a party must adhere to union referral obligations, union security obligations, or collectively bargained compensation or benefits. I see no ban on a project labor agreement that mandates certain safety requirements be met. I see no ban on project labor agreements that require certain efficiencies to be met. I see no ban on project labor agreements that would require apprenticeship programs, and I see no ban on project labor agreements that would regulate hours or holiday schedules. We could do those now. The ban is related to the, the union referral, union security, and the collectively bargained compensation and benefits. Is that, does the legal department have a different view of it? Because that's what I see in the plain language.
I'm sorry. The way I read it is that you could use it, and I think this is your question, you just can't require it.
Okay.
That's the way I read it.
So, but, so the administration is saying we have a ban on PLAs in Anarundel County, and that's not accurate. We can use them. We just can't require them.
Just can't require them.
Cannot require them.
Okay, so we could, for now, if we put out a bid on a project, ask for a bid, both with a PLA and without a PLA, and see what bids come back, and evaluate them on their merits, right?
I defer to law, but I think if you put out a bid and ask for them, you would be requiring a party to participate in a project labor agreement. So I don't think it quite works like that, and I defer to Ms. Klausmeyer, who's a much better attorney than I.
I think that the situation of not requiring it would be, you put out a, probably an RFP, and somebody comes back with a PLA.
A PLA.
Not that you say, give me a bid for both.
Okay, but you could accept it.
You could accept it at that point.
And could we, similarly, right now, issue a contract and require a PLA that says you will only work eight hours a day, Monday through Friday? Because that's not prohibited in there.
You would be requiring a, you just said a PLA.
But it's, but, but if you read the rest of the clause, no procurement contract may include a clause that requires a party to participate in or offers a bonus or preferential treatment to a party who participates in a project labor agreement in which you must adhere to obligations concerning union referral, union security, or collectively bargained compensation or benefits. There's no prohibition on a project labor agreement that mandates certain hours that you can work. Is that accurate?
Well, I don't think that's within the, I'll defer to Mr. Heim. I'm not sure that's within the definition of a project labor agreement.
Well, the administration just cited project labor agreements to be used for safety, efficiency, apprenticeships, hours, holiday schedules, and that there's no specific requirement on any given language, that these are all things that can serve. So my point is simply that, right now, we can use project labor agreements to, you know, contract for safety, apprenticeships, hours, and holiday schedules, and efficiency.
You could have agreements that do that.
Okay.
That then aren't, but that don't have collectively bargained compensation or benefit.
Right, so that's the part that we're lifting the ban on, is that we are now, if we lift this ban, we would then be allowing a contract requirement to use collectively bargained wages and benefits.
So, if you could have a contract, Mr. Heim could put out an RFP that said, nobody is allowed to work more than eight hours. I don't call that a project labor agreement, and maybe that's the terminology that is confusing. If it's, but if it's in terms of a collectively bargained union referral, if it's in relation to a union, that you have to use a union, you have to do, use collectively bargained compensation or benefits, that's a project labor agreement.
So that's the piece that we're lifting. We are lifting, we are allowing, by lifting this ban, we would be allowing the county to mandate union referral, union security, and union compensation and benefit. And we would require any non-union contractor who wanted to bid on the project to sign on to those union compensation and union benefits and union referrals and union security.
I believe so.
Well, I'll defer, there will be folks that are really experts in this coming behind us, and I hear some murmurings in the office, in the audience. So I'll sort of maybe punt on that a little bit, but I will say that whether or not a non-union contractor bids on the contract, the employees of that contractor are not required to join a union. They will receive the benefits of the wages and et cetera that come with that, but they would not, there's no, it would be illegal under federal law to require union membership.
And I'll touch on this a little bit, I have a couple of amendments coming, but if the goal is safety, efficiency, hours, holiday work schedules, my point is, we can already do that. If the goal is higher wages, I think there are potentially more efficient and more logical ways to get at them than requiring a non-union contractor to sign on to a labor agreement that requires union referrals and hiring from certain areas and things like that. I just want to point out, and I said this at the work session a little bit, I have concerns that mandating a PLA that requires union referrals and union security and union compensation and benefits could actually have a detrimental effect on some of the businesses in the county. I went to the NICA website to look particularly at the electrician union. I noted that on their chapter, Membership, only four of the dozens of members were actually located in Anarundel County. So to the extent that we have a project where we mandate the use of a PLA, and someone from NICA is coming to, to bid on this project, we actually may end up sending the labor out of Anarundel County. We may not be using an Anarundel County business, we may not be helping our own, you know, residents. And I will note, I talked a little bit about this at the work session as well, the Nationals Park Stadium was done under a project labor agreement. And one of the things that was supposed to happen was that, you know, they were going to use 25% of the jobs, were going to be apprentices, 50% of all of those apprentices were going to be bona fide city residents, they were going to have, you know, all kinds of small business goals and whatnot, and they fell short of almost all of their goals. And in fact, one, one statistic that stuck out to me was that 74% of the higher-paid journeyman hours went to non-residents. And so I have major concerns that if we do this in the county, we're actually going to be hurting our own residents, and that's problematic to me. I would prefer to see something that benefits all of the residents and puts people on a more level playing field, particularly since we can already do these other safety and efficiency requirements.
Counselwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll address some more of the things when we get to amendments, but the one thing I wanted to correct is, we are not the only county in the state that has this clause in our code. I'm actually looking at Queen Anne's County's Code, Section 4-13.1, prohibited clause in procurement contracts, they have identical language. It's literally the exact same thing as what we have in ours. So we are not the outlier. I know that was something that's been said before, is that we were sort of all by ourselves on an island. It's not actually correct, I just want to clarify that for the record.
Counselwoman Pickard?
But we are out on an island with Queen Anne's County. So, it's an island of two instead of one. I want to make sure we all are talking about the same thing with this bill. We are repealing a ban, a prohibition on project labor agreements. We are not mandating project labor agreements. So, I'm not sure why, I know there are some amendments coming, and I have read them, and I have researched them, and I've tried to understand them. I feel like some of those are a little premature, and if we are looking to look at best value contracting and things like that, those are conversations for another day. This is a simple repealing a ban, and I'm viewing it that way. We can talk about amendments later, if we need to.
Counselwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I respectfully disagree with my colleague, and this is what I would say. Mr. Swain actually made a similar comment at the work session. He indicated, Counselwoman Hare and I were asking him a variety of questions about, could this ultimately lead to the county saying, we're going to require PLAs? And he said, no, 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 you can't do that, it's discriminatory. Okay. And then we went away, and a few hours later, we got, and I credit him, I appreciate this, a clarifying email where he noted that, in fact, yes, the purchasing department can sit in there and say, we are now going to require PLAs in any contract that we do for procurement. So this is not quite as simple as just getting rid of a ban, because once you get rid of the ban, then we, as a council, have lost discretion over whether we're using PLAs or not, and it falls straight to the administration. And, again, I may be sort of putting the cart before the horse in a sense, but I can't really understand why the administration would get rid of a ban just because it's the right thing to do. I have to anticipate that there is some sense that we're going to use these PLAs, otherwise, why are we going through the effort of repealing this? With that being said, then, I think it really gets us to the question of, let's talk about the merits. And so I think that to suggest that this is just a simple removal of a prohibition is, is really sort of a taking a myopic view of this issue. It's a much broader issue, and I think we need to discuss this holistically.
We have another question, but, Mr. Barron, you can respond to that.
I just wanted, really quick, to respond to that point, and to a point made by Counselwoman Hare earlier. We can point to projects that were done under a project labor agreement that went very well, you can point to projects that went under a project labor agreement that had their flaws, the same way we can point to projects that were done without a project labor agreement that went well, or projects that went. So the discerning, the key factor here is, is the procurement professionals and making their determination about which is the best way to manage the project. And while I can't sit here and say today, the administration has discussed this project as ripe for a project labor agreement, adding this tool back into the toolbox, I think, is important for our procurement team to be able to look at and analyze and determine based on the needs of each individual, unique project. Because we just went through the budget process, there are a number of things in the capital budget that span a gambit of projects the county does, and there's, there's the potential for a future large-scale project where a project labor agreement might have beneficial pieces to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly to follow up, and I understand that, and I appreciate those, that sentiment and what you're expressing. My concern is, I don't believe that the previous, well, two previous councils just sort of willy-nilly said, we're going to ban this. I think there was a reason that they did it, and so for this council to come in and say, we're going to overturn that ban, I think there needs to be some good understanding of why they did it, and why maybe that's failing, and then why this is going to be beneficial to the county, and that's what I'm trying to find in all of this. Because I have to look at the bill, I may be mixing it up with another one, but I thought this was a 5-2 vote of the council, where actually one Democratic member even joined with the Republicans. I need to check that before I'm quoted on it, but, but I thought this was a 5-2 vote.
You might be accurate, but partisanship, to a side. I mean, I did, I did a little bit of research myself, and a particular council member who opposed the bill believed that it was specifically to make an anti-union statement, and he's quoted in the paper saying such. So, the council's a body of individuals, so I'm sure everybody has their own motivations.
Thank you. Counselwoman Rodvian, and then Counselwoman Hare.
I just wanted to address the point that I really think this, at the core, this really is about union labor, and whether or not we're making public projects in Anarundel County accessible to union labor. I think there are two competing values that, you know, that come into play here, and one is, you know, one is at least the appearance of having the lowest cost to the county, and the other one is elevating workers and being a role model in how we treat the people who are in service of the county, even if they're in... are in service of the county, even if they're indirectly in service of the county for projects. By, in my opinion, encouraging union membership elevates wages, elevates, elevates the middle class. I mean, there was a time in the United States when, you know, "Look for the Union Label" was a little theme song, and we're so far past that, and I think as that's declined, we've seen the decline of the middle class. So to me, this is about opening a door that has been closed. Union membership in the county, I think we've, you know, we've discussed at least a little bit, is low in the county, so we're not going to be able to start with gigantic PLAs. We're going to have to start small, but I think this is a way to help rebuild and help encourage some of that working class that has been in decline, you know, over the past several decades.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to reiterate, given the administration's comment about a tool in the toolbox for the procurement office, that the procurement office already has the discretion to accept a proposed PLA by a bidder. If it comes in on a project, the ban is simply on a requirement in a contract. So we do already have this tool in the toolbox if a bidder proposes it, and like I said, we have this tool in the toolbox for all of the other various items that one might see in a PLA. It is only these few that are prohibited from being mandated by the county.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Yeah, I just thought I would share that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just with neighbors this weekend, and I have a neighbor who, and friend, who is a union electrician, currently working out of a union shop in Clinton, Maryland, and driving to Rockville on the project he is currently employed. So while we might not have a union, as many union shops housed here, we certainly have union labor in this county, and they are going elsewhere for their work sites. So that's all I had to say.
Any further discussion? I know we're going to have amendment regarding this, but I think that people also don't want to talk about a living prevailing wage, and that's something that this council will obviously have amendments and discussion, but it's something that we need to consider larger, because we want to make sure that everybody certainly gets paid what they deserve. And I think that as we move forward as a policy with this council, hopefully, whether this bill or other bills, we address that. But I do want to ask the procurement office, so we're clear, because I've heard back and forth, we're not mandating PLAs. Is that correct? You're the procurement officer?
Yes.
Okay. And then when it will be used will be depending on the project and whatever it may be?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? All right, we do have a couple amendments, but before we do that, we have to go open a public, public hearing. I do have folks, so if you guys could exit for a second. I will call names up six at a time. We'll have you guys testify, name in two minutes. Mr. Jeff Ferguson, Mr. Tom Killian, Mr. Sean Strasser, Mr. Gerald Jackson, Mr. Bernard Brill, and Mr. Jeff Guido. If you guys would make your way forward, please. Doesn't matter where you sit, I'll call your name and we'll all get through. I have these for the council members. Mr. Ferguson's first. Name, address, two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Ferguson, 4509 Grandview Farm, Harwood, Maryland. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. I am president of Ferguson Trenching Company and FTC Aggregate Supply, and I'm here this evening testifying in opposition of Bill 5619. I would like to say, I know there has been discussion, I've been part of discussions for amendments, and I do hope that some of those are considered. All of the council members have received letters basically stating the facts of why we think project labor agreements themselves may not be a good idea for Anarundel County. I'm just going to leave that for you all to read, I'm certainly not going to repeat that this evening, but I just wanted to talk about, as a company owner, being an open shop contractor, obviously, why I feel it's unfair. Our business has been in business for 53 years, started right in Annapolis, have been in the county ever since. We're a family-owned business, and I feel like our employees are family. There's a work shortage for everybody, and we're all competing, willing to pay labor, and we're training. When I met with the county executive probably a week or two ago, I asked him, you know, what would be the reasoning for this? And the answer I got was, he wanted to pay workers a decent salary, unions are safe, and unions train. I'm not here to say that they don't train and they're not safe, but I think it is wrong to assume that if you're an open shop contractor, you're all of the opposite. We have two safety managers on staff, a quality control. My company's incident rate is the lowest it's been in the history of the company right now. We all want our workers safe to go home. As far as pay, workers have the right to move to another job, to join a union, to organize if they-
Please summarize, Mr.-
I apologize. Long story short, I, I hope that the council will come together and look at some of the amendments. We can meet somewhere in the middle of the road to where if there is a project labor agreement in the future, there can be a further discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Killian, Tom Killian?
Good evening, council. Tom Killian, 8 Evergreen Trail, Severna Park. I am a member of sheet metal workers local union 100, and I've been a member for the past 40 years. I've been a county resident and paid taxes in this county, along with my siblings and my mother and extended family. In addition, I represent over 300 sheet metal workers that live in this county, and I ask you to vote in favor of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sean Strasser?
Good evening, council members. My name is Sean Strasser. I live at 3035 Pike Drive, Reva, Maryland, which is in Reva Farms, and I just would like to reiterate something that Councilwoman Pickard had said about the electrician, union electrician has to travel out of Anarundel County every day to work. There's five other members of my local union alone that live in my neighborhood that I know for a fact travel out of Anarundel County every day to make a decent living for their families, provide health care, and earn a retirement for themselves. I just want to give you two examples of some successes that project labor agreements have been. In Calvert County, that project that concluded last year in 2017, yes, everybody knows about the COVID-19 expansion down there that was done under a project labor agreement. Dominion Energy and the Secretary of Energy, Rick Perry, were down there last, about this time last year, when they had the ribbon cutting ceremony that said that project came in on time, under budget. And that's a huge plus, because that project was in a neighborhood of $4.5 billion. So project labor agreements are successful. They can provide for the residents of this county a living wage and decent benefits for themselves and their families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gerald Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I wanted to address something that Councilwoman Hare said about union wages. PLAs are based on pretty much prevailing wages, so it doesn't have to be, it's not always union wages, but it's prevailing wages. But PLAs are not designed to, to be a deterrent to contractors who don't have a union affiliation. It's more a deterrent to bad contractors. And as a, just as a point of reference, I have probably 300 members from the Plumbers and Steamfitters Local, which I represent, who live in Anarundel County. A lot of, a lot of my guys are here. I have members here who have 60 years in a local and live right here in Anarundel County. I just want to go over a few things that PLAs do provide, and you're going to hear this information, you've heard it already, provide uniform wages, benefits, overtime pay, hours, working conditions, and work rules for a, or major construction projects, provide contractors with a reliable and uninterrupted supply of qualified workers at predictable costs, ensure that a project would be completed on time and on budget due to the supply of qualified labor and relative ease of project management. Project labor agreement reduces misclassification of workers and related underpayment of payroll taxes, workers' compensation, and other requirements. So misclassification of workers and those type things are a major problem in the state. We've had to pass legislation with the general contractor liability to hold GCs responsible for unsavvy subcontractors. So I just believe that PLAs are, are good for workers as far as wages, benefits. We all want health care for our, for our citizens and your constituents, and we also want them to retire with dignity with pensions and annuities as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bernard Brill?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Bernie Brill. I'm the Executive Director of the Sheet Metal and Air Crafty Contractors, National Association's Mid-Atlantic Chapter, located in Greenbelt, Maryland. This evening, I'm representing some 60 firms employing more than 2,000 workers. These companies are performing work in all parts of the state. They play by the rules and frequently participate in project labor agreements. The repeal of the ban on project labor agreements, or PLAs, in Anarundel County will ensure that future large-scale construction projects are completed on time, with the highest degree of quality, and in a cost-effective manner. The county should want to encourage the use of project labor agreements on all important projects. PLAs and prevailing wage are two key elements in maintaining a highly educated and skilled workforce in Maryland. PLAs also provide a tangible benefit to every Maryland community in the form of employment opportunities, a strong tax base, a safer work environment, and keeping Anarundel County an attractive place to live and work. On the flip side, contractors working under PLAs know they can take on work that will allow them to fairly compensate their workers, cover their overhead, pay taxes, support an apprenticeship training center, and enough profits to stay in business. When state and local governments implement PLAs, they know that the money paid is recirculated through their communities multiple times. Project labor agreements are not discriminatory and gives every contractor the same opportunity to pursue work, union and non-union alike. This is not an argument about union versus non-union. Everybody plays by the same rules. Because our contracts are working under a collective bargain agreement, you, the customer, don't have to worry about wage theft or worker misclassification violations. This is important because too often, we, we often see good contracts who play by the rules are being pushed aside by unscrupulous contractors, who cheat the system by misclassifying workers, using substandard materials, or skipping out on taxes, or not paying living wages and benefits. It is no secret that the reason many non-union firms do not like PLAs is due to the strict onsite implementation and enforcement of business ethics, contracting and employment management representatives. The fact is that private PLAs are routinely selected by corporate builders to save money and to get complex work done on time.
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Guido?
My chair, vice chair, and council members, this opportunity to speak. I'm Jeff Guido. I'm the Director for the Baltimore DC Building Trades. We are in support of Bill 5619 to repeal the Anarundel County Code of 8-2-114I 2005 as amended. A predetermined ban on project labor agreements, PLAs, creates an undue hindrance on the working men and women of Anarundel County. By enacting a repeal of the ban, you will open up opportunities for growth, employment, and training in careers that support working families. Project labor agreements are all-inclusive and create a level playing field for free-market competition in the procurement of public and private construction projects. PLAs provide employment and training opportunities for veterans, minorities, and women. These opportunities are directly connected to the local residents of Anarundel County. The jobs provided not only include better wages, but also provide health insurance, including dependents, and retirement income. These jobs, these are jobs that give an individual the freedom to balance life and work. As you know, Maryland is one of the most expensive states in the U.S., and the cost of living continues to rise. According to a recent EPI, Economic Policy Institute, a study, a family of two adults and two children in Anarundel County would need to earn a combined $99,570 per year, or $8,297 a month to live comfortably. Project labor agreements also provide for apprenticeship training that creates a continued pipeline of skilled craftspersons, as we know the skilled craftsperson is aging fast. The Baltimore DC Building Trades Apprenticeship Programs are the largest privately funded, paid tuition, post-high school apprenticeship training system in Maryland. As Anarundel County has a population of more than 576,000 people with a growth rate of 12.38%, the need for maintenance and expansions of its infrastructure utilities, gas, sewer, water, and electricity, with the implementation of renewable green energy, the use of PLAs becomes more imminent, and we urge the council for a favorable vote. Thank you.
Thank you, this panel, and yours dismissed. Appreciate your testimony. We're going to call up the next group. Raj Khudjadkar, Jerry Johnson, next two on the list.
My name is Raj Khudjadkar. My address is 8385 Piney Orchard Parkway, Odenton, Maryland. I am the President and CEO of the Central Maryland Chamber, otherwise known as the CMC. I'm here to speak on behalf of our 500-member chamber against Bill 5619. Let me be clear from the outset, the CMC is a full-spectrum chamber serving businesses in all sectors and of all sizes, from sole proprietors to Fortune 100 companies. Let me move this a little closer. I'm speaking on behalf of an extensive network which recognizes inherent harm in Bill 5619. When it comes to procurement, the county currently employs a fair system that treats all businesses on an equal playing field. In my two years at the CMC, I've never once been approached by a member business citing equity issues in terms of the current purchasing system. As a reminder, we have 500 businesses in the chamber. I've not been approached once by any of them. I'm told by those in support of this bill that it is innocuous, simply optics, because it doesn't mandate contracting practices that give preferential treatment to contractors participating in project labor agreements, or PLAs. But this bill is the first and most important step in opening the door to a mandate. If you all do not foresee a mandate for PLAs on the horizon, it really begs the question, why even go through this exercise? Because currently, you can be a part of a PLA and go after a county contract. The other thing I'd like to point out really quickly, since my time is running out, it's just, in terms of the fair play, there's also taxpayer dollars to take into consideration. And as we know, if, when you have more competition and more businesses that are able to bid, then you can take that into consideration. And again, the vast majority of our businesses in the chamber aren't a part of PLAs, and same thing with county businesses in general.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
My name is Jerry Johnson. I live at 3708 Seventh Avenue in Edgewater, Maryland. I've been a union carpenter for 38 years. I built the House of Delicates over there. That's a real nice building. That was a PLL agreement over there. I'm not that educated on this, but I know the union is way to go. We teach brothers and sisters on how to work, be safe. They teach me how to be safe. You know, bringing up the younger generation is hard to get them in here nowadays. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. This panel is dismissed. At this point, if there's anyone who did not sign up, who'd like to come forward and wish to speak, they may do so at this time. Once again, last call for anyone who did not sign up but still like to speak. Madam Secretary, we'll have a sheet that we need you to sign, but we'll just need your name and address in two minutes.
My name is Concepcion Morales. I live at 101 Baltimore Avenue, Glen Burnie. I am Anarundel County, a taxpayer in this county, and I want to make sure my tax money being spent responsibly, in a responsible manner. I am a carpenter union member for 15 years, and I think PLA is good for the workers. Nowadays, most of the workforce in, in this county, in this state, and everywhere, is vulnerable workforce. Workers' rights are abused by contractors, and I think PLA will protect workers' rights. So the contractors, they already know that they can take advantage of the vulnerable workforce by misclassifying workers, paying under the tables, cash, and all those practices, because they know those people can be abused. And having PLAs, the contractor will have the way to, the county will control better what their practices are in the job site. So I'm here to support and have a PLA that will protect workers' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
My name is Tracy Keebler. Is this name working? Yeah, there we go. My name is Tracy Keebler. I live at 377 Taylor Avenue, Glen Burnie, Maryland, 21060. I don't know if you understand that the labor agreement is between the union and the labor. The union holds my medical benefits, makes sure they get paid. If I lapse from one job to another job, I can come back with my union affiliation. My collected funds go to a place that holds the medical benefits for me, whether I'm working for John J. Curlin or Flotron. If I lose my job with John J. Curlin because the building is built, and I flip over to Flotron, I still have medical benefits because of my labor agreement with my union. Same thing with the pension. If I'm working for Pulling Kent, and they're done building the buildings, and they lay us all off, and I jump over and end up with John J. Curlin, then my retirement benefits go to the labor agreement with my union. And the union contracts the labor agreement with the project people, so they're like a buffer between the man and that. In these kind of agreements, we get to have medical insurance, we get to have pensions. They are federal laws that support us, like Executive Order 11246. They're made by the President and the Office of the President, and there are federal trade rules that govern all of this, that gets us into these union situations anyway. It's supposed to support the workers when you get into your labor contract with medical benefits, pension, whether you have...
Please summarize. You could summarize. I'll sit.
Well, that's about it. I mean, that's the point I got going on, plus minorities discrimination, all this kind of stuff.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, the public hearing on 56, or excuse me, yeah, 5619 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5619.
Bill Number 5619, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Project Labor Agreements.
Okay, any further discussion on the current bill? We do have some amendments. Okay, we'll start off. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this technical amendment corrects an inadvertent omission of the article and title in the body of the bill.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is the administration?
It's technical. It corrects the unintentional omission of the title.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number One?
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard? Oh, abstinent. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvien?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstinent roll call. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment allows project labor agreements and requires county council approval of project labor agreements.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a motion that's probably moved in second. This is Mr. Volkey and Ms. Hare. Not sure who would like to speak.
I can start. Ms. Hare can jump in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this amendment is intended to deal with some of the sort of concerns that both myself and Ms. Hare have with this bill, and maybe others share these too. Effectively, this would allow project labor agreements. This would not say they're off the table. However, if a project labor agreement was to be used prior to the Purchasing Office going out and saying, "We're going to solicit bids for that project," that would need to be brought to the council, and upon an affirmative vote of five members of this council, then you could actually see this move forward. So the intention is to ensure that these projects that are being bid are going to make financial sense for the county. So we've talked about good use of the taxpayers' money, et cetera. Well, this would ensure that whatever is going forward is going to come in front of the council first. As the ultimate fiscal authority in this county, we are the ones who are, at the end of the day, responsible to the taxpayers for how their money is spent. And so this would continue to allow that to rest here in the county council, as opposed to in the administration, which if this bill is not amended in this way, this authority would lie with the Purchasing Office to be able to decide how they want to put together bids and put them out, which ultimately cedes that authority to the county executive. So again, to be clear, this continues to repeal the prohibition. So let's just be clear about that. Everybody said they want to get rid of it. Some people said they don't. This would actually allow it to go away, but it would say that prior to a project being advertised, you've got to bring it to the council. We've got to look at it, and we have to agree it makes sense. That's all this is doing.
All right, we have a lot of lights here, so I'm going to try and work my way over. Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just make a general comment. Each of these amendments that I think you'll see, we've tried to strike a balance, or I've tried to strike a balance, I think, Mr. Volkey, on this one, the same thing, recognizing that there are potentially competing points of views on this, and that it is potentially a contentious topic, and we've tried to find what I will call a middle ground where everyone can live comfortably, so that we are working together and making sure that if a PLA moves forward on a project, it does so in a responsible manner for the, you know, health, wealth, and benefit of the county residents, the county itself, et cetera.
Councilwoman Rodvien?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not mean to have my light on.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with my colleagues on the thoughts behind this amendment and would like to be added as a cosponsor.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few concerns about this, in that it's my understanding, as we approve capital projects in the budget, we've already set a threshold of what that project can spend, taxpayer dollars, correct? So if we're going to add this layer of a vote of five to include a project labor agreement with that project, I feel like we're politicizing a project unnecessarily so. We've already voted on it in the budget. It's been approved for our procurement office to move forward in the contract bidding. I feel like this is possibly even outside of our purview as the legislative body of the council, but I would need to understand that further.
Law Office?
Sure. That's exactly correct. I think this violates the charter. I mean, the charter puts the procurement power in the hands of the executive branch. You are the fiscal authority in the sense of approving the money, but you have no, there's no authority for the council to infuse itself into the actual procurement process and actually approve a method of procurement. That is a pure executive function beyond the charter powers of the legislature.
We don't have to like that necessarily all the time, but that is part of the charter.
That's correct.
So thank you.
Point of clarification, that also includes the bond bill that would release for capital projects, so there's two strikes at the apple. Am I correct?
Because the council also approves the bond bill?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hare?
So would it be a violation of charter then to have a project that's anticipated to be used for a PLA be designated as such in the budget? Probably. I mean, I wouldn't have an issue with saying it's eligible for a PLA, but to actually say you have to use a PLA for a particular project, because the procurement officer has the right to say whether, I mean, there's a lot of different procurement methods allowed, not a lot, but there are different procurement methods allowed. The procurement officer has the, all of the authority to determine what that method's going to be, and what the contract is ultimately going to look like. So in any way that the council kind of infuses itself into that process is in violation. No, I'm sorry. I apologize. If the county executive designates a project as a project to be used with a PLA in his or her proposed budget? The county executive could do it because it is an executive branch function. Okay, thank you.
A quick follow-up, too. There was some testimony earlier that the National Stadium, there were certain other single projects, this is for procurement, okay? This gets back to the mandate, because I hear this all the time, this is mandating, mandating. So my understanding is that a PLA is likely going to be used for single projects, not every single project. Could you clarify, please, for the benefit of the audience and everyone here, because I keep hearing back and forth that this is going to mandate, this is all coming, like, can you, because you're the procurement officer, I want to hear exactly what the plan is.
Absolutely. Andrew Heim, purchasing agent, just to clarify, yeah, I would say, when it comes to construction and the application in a procurement function, you'd want to look at multiple factors for each individual specific project if a PLA would be appropriate to be able to be applied. Some of those factors would include schedule, understanding the market conditions, and the factors of why this would be in the county's best interest, basically. So there'd be multiple variety of different circumstances that could dictate why a PLA may work, and I would just say, from my experience, you can't, may not think of something right away and say, "This is definitely a great example of where that would happen," but you kind of have to take those on a case-by-case basis.
Madam Auditor, I know you wanted to chime in.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Can you explain the regulation in the code that says the purchasing regulations shall be submitted and approved for adoption by the county council? Because, yeah, no, just because we were saying, like, the county council has no say in procurement, but we have it in the regs.
Right, it's in, and it's been done in the past, that we did a total rewrite of the purchase, what was then called the purchasing manual several years ago, more than five, I guess, now. But so when those are adopted, and now they're called regulations, then there, the council does review them, and they're reviewed to make sure that they comport with Article 8 of the code, which is the purchasing procurement. There's also provisions for amendment, and the only provisions that the council, that need to be brought back to the council once the regulations are adopted are those that relate to sort of the non-competitive and emergency type of provisions, so emergency contracts and non-competitive bidding. So things that, any other, anything else that gets done to the purchasing regulations is just approved through the central services officer, the CAO, and the Office of Law.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm sorry, I just want to back up one second, but that, yes, but then, on the day-to-day process of procurement, there's no, the council's not involved. I'm sorry. Yes.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to ask a process question. Office of Law got these amendments in advance of today's hearing, right?
Yes.
Because we sent them out, I think they were Friday we sent them to you all. You all represent the administration, but you have that dual hat of also representing us. When did Office of Law determine that these were violative of the charter and thereby going to be a major problem? And for what reason were we not informed?
I don't think that these were sent to me by the council. They were sent to me by the administration.
Yeah, and I want to take some responsibility. I should have, when this decision, opinion came to me at about four o'clock today, I probably should have forwarded it off to you. I don't know if you've noticed, there have been a lot of things going on today.
I get it, I get it.
And I do want to, I want to take full responsibility for not circling back on this one. I should have sent you a quick note about it.
I appreciate that, and thank you for taking that, because to me, it just sort of feels like undue surprise, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, is I just want to make sure that in future, if we put in an amendment like this, and you all say, "Oh, my gosh, this is a major problem," then come back and tell us. Don't, it shouldn't be a gotcha.
I should have done it, and in fact, it was suggested to me, and it got away from me.
Okay, thank you.
If it had been sent directly to me, I would have responded directly.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, just for clarity, from the Office of Law's position, you're stating that you believe that this amendment could violate the charter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We'll call the question. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Just to briefly state, because we say this violates the charter, I'm going to vote nay on it.
Ms. Fiedler?
For the very reason my colleague just gave, I will be voting nay because it violates the charter.
Ms. Rodvien?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Can I just say ditto because it violates the charter? Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Seven in the negative. Amendment Number Two is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment allows project labor agreements if proposed by a bidder.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm here trying to strike the balance in this case. We talked a little bit about the fact that there are some PLAs that could be allowed under the county as it is. This would expressly allow the county to have the discretion to consider any project labor agreement if it were proposed by a bidder. That makes it clear for everyone. I think that puts everyone on the most even footing, where the county is not saying you must use a PLA or you can't use a PLA. They're letting everyone come to the table, everyone put their bids out, and then the county does their evaluation, as the procurement office does, and it sets everyone sort of in the best place possible to put forth their best bid. So I think this, I believe, at least addresses the administration's goal, but also does not require a contractor who does not wish to use a PLA to propose on one.
So, Mr. Barron and Ms. Fiedler?
Sorry. I killed the gun there. For the, I understand the balance you're trying to strike, and I'm going to ask Mr. Heim to speak a little bit about sort of the procurement reasons, but I do want to say, as far as this tool being in the toolbox, it's the county that should be deciding, you know, what the procurement looks like. And so we're turning over, I think, in this amendment, it would turn over a lot of the decision about whether or not a PLA is appropriate to the bidders, and I think it sort of distracts, or maybe distracts is the wrong word, but the only assessment should, is not necessarily the cost. There's other factors that come into play. And if you have two, and Mr. Heim is going to speak a lot more eloquently than I, but if you have two different bids that are proposing two structures of the project with relation to the labor, to the, to the, all the health and safety, all the other benefits that project labor agreements can entail, I don't believe that's appropriate, and I think there's some real concerns from procurement, particularly around this amendment. So if you don't mind, I'll let him speak more eloquently than I did.
Thank you. Andrew Heim, so I just, to Councilwoman Hare's point, I think that, I certainly see the intent here. I think that one of the concerns I would look at is, first off, making sure that part of our procurement process is not just allowing for certain circumstances, but it's making sure that everybody is working off the same sheet of music. Everybody is following the same rules, the same requirements when bidding a solicitation. So I could see a world where not being clear enough during a solicitation would open up for protest in areas where, circumstances where if it was that open on whether a project labor agreement could or could not be applied, that we might be, we might not have defined the scope well enough in that case. So I could see that as being one potential issue. Another potential issue is this relates to competitive solicitations, which wouldn't address all of the circumstances where we might have a PLA, where a cooperative procurement may come into place, or a sole source procurement may come into a place because of defined requirements under Article 8 that would dictate those procurement decisions were the appropriate procurement selection to make. So I think that that's where I see it missing some of the mark there.
You're suggesting that this would somehow prevent a sole source contract?
Looking at the 8-2-115 mandatory clauses, Item I, project labor agreements prohibited, no procurement contract may include. So no procurement contract is a broad statement, I think, that would include sole source contracts as well as competitive procurement contracts.
I get that, but you're suggesting that this amendment would somehow preclude you from...
From, when you're talking about just bidding in those cases.
Okay, so you're saying that this is not expansive enough? It should include...
Correct.
Okay, would you be supportive of this if it included broader language that said was proposed on a procurement?
Yes, or, yeah, all county-approved procurement, you know, county-approved procurement contract vehicles.
So if the amendment instead said, "Except that the county shall have the discretion to allow a project labor agreement if it is proposed on a county procurement?"
I think I'd want to...
You'd be okay with that?
...the Office of Law, but that would alleviate my concern as what we discussed.
Okay, thank you. And if I could, I just have a, as a matter of form, if I understand what this amendment is doing, it's removing the repeal, so it's removing the brackets right now that are around I repealing I, and then it's adding a phrase, "Except that the county shall have the discretion to allow a project labor agreement if it is proposed," and we can go over bidder in, you know, contract or whatever. I don't think this does anything more...
I don't think this does anything more than what the language currently is. We just had this discussion, I think, at the very beginning, right?
Right, and I agree with you, but everyone, everyone, all the testimony I'm hearing is that there is a ban on PLAs, and I'm trying to make it explicitly clear that there's not a ban on PLAs. It's the mandate that is banned by the county. And so this amendment, I think, makes it crystal clear in the text of the legislation that while the county may not say, "You must use a PLA," it has absolute authority to accept a PLA on a procurement, which I think puts both union and non-union, and people in support of the PLAs and people not in the support of PLAs on a more equal footing, if it's that explicit. That's my only goal here.
Yeah, I guess my point was just you could do the same thing by defeating, defeating the bill would do the same exact thing.
Yes, I agree, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Pickard?
So defeating the bill would bring us back to what, this is basically what our code currently says, but doesn't this also cause a problem in the bidder forming the language around the PLA, isn't that what you just said? Rather than the county deciding what we would like the project labor agreement to include and allow the project bidders to address those needs?
If I understand correctly, about the plan outlined is that we would, this would open it up to all approved procurement methods, including competitive solicitation, and including that in a competitive solicitation.
Councilwoman Raviyan?
My understanding is that a PLA raises the bar with respect to a whole variety of factors with related to labor. And if you're allowing, if you're allowing some entities to bid without a PLA, and they're not meeting that raised bar, and others to bid with a PLA, and they are meeting that raised bar, then I almost see that they're, actually that this pulls them off even footing because you're saying, "Well, a PLA, we're going to meet all of these requirements of a higher bar, and without the PLA, or without the requirement, then you're not meeting them." Is that?
That's correct, and that's actually one of the points I was addressing with Councilwoman Harris' point of, it has to be an even playing field across the board. We have to make sure that the requirements are the same in a competitive solicitation.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think the ultimate outcome, you know, might be, like, the ultimate completed work might be the same, but the parameters for getting there are what's different, and the requirements for what's, you know, the requirements for how you'd get there are what's different, and the PLA raises that bar for how do you get that project completed?
Would you have discretion to accept the PLA in a best value situation, where you've got bidders who are bidding on a, with a proposed project labor agreement and without, and different hours and whatever? You'd have discretion to take the best value, right?
Yes, I would have discretion to take the best value, but as it stands right now in the code, that the prohibition still exists right now, and no procurement contracts can be let that would include a PLA.
That would require a PLA.
That would require a PLA, sorry.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to understand this. I don't think this is as simple as everybody makes it seem, but maybe I'm just missing it. That could be possible, too. And I hear people in the audience, it's fine. Let me ask this question. If you take away the prohibition, or if you keep the prohibition, but you add this except language in here, and the except language allows the bidders to come in and make the proposal, and to say, "Here is my proposal," you can look at all of them, right? And you can review all of them, and you can make a value judgment, and you don't necessarily have to be bound by picking the lowest-cost bidder. So you all could look at it and say, "Yeah, you know, they're cheap, but we don't think they're going to do a good job," or "They're not going to treat people well," or "They're not a qualified contractor." And so you're going to pick somebody else. So I guess what my question is with this is, how in the world does this not still give you all the discretion to be able to do what you want to do with this particular amendment? And maybe it needs that piece, that little change that you were talking to Councilwoman Harris about, and I assume she might be working on an amendment right along those lines. My point to you is, how does this not get you the place you want to go? This gets back to, as we talked about at the work session, scalpel versus machete.
Yep.
You all are coming in and just sort of hacking this away and saying, "Get rid of it." And we're coming in and saying, "Well, we think we can still do what you want to do, but you don't have to hack the whole thing away. You can just sort of cut a little closer with this." So that's where I'm confused, is how this doesn't get you there.
I think with the revision that allows for all procurement methods, both competitive and non-competitive, so that we're not limiting, you know, a one-type-fits-all scenario, I think that that could get us to a, at least from a procurement standpoint, but again, I would want to, you know, kind of address that from the administration's perspective.
Understood, and I get that, but it sounds to me like that would be a solution, that could be a solution, that would still give the procurement office the discretion and the ability to review multiple bids. If a bidder comes in and says, "I think using a PLA is going to make sense," you can view that, and that could still be the bid that you take.
I think the one concern I have with what you're describing there is back to the point of ensuring fair and equal competition, and making sure that the requirements that we're dictating are, again, I absolutely get your point of best value, but if we are that open of, you know, it could be a PLA or it could not be a PLA, I think that there are very legitimate potential for, grounds for protest in those circumstances, saying, "You, the purchasing agent, were not clear enough, and therefore, because you were not clear enough, XYZ Company should have won this solicitation."
And I get that, I think that probably exists anywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, it's always an option. I think the concern that I have is, I trust you all are pretty smart people. I trust that you have a pretty good purchasing office, and I trust that you probably have the ability to weed through a lot of these different things, even if bidder one comes in without a PLA, and they look like they're really cheap, bidder two comes in with a PLA, and they are more expensive, but you think it's a better value, I trust you've got the discretion to figure that out.
Right.
So I guess to me, it seems like this, subject to that one little change, is going to get you where you want to go.
That one little change is coming.
Well, that, this amendment also would take away the ability for the procurement office on the front end to require.
Correct.
PLA.
Correct.
And specific provisions in there, so.
But I thought you all weren't interested in required.
No.
Okay.
Let's be clear.
Oh, okay.
Let's be clear. The tool in the toolbox that the county would like is the same tool in the toolbox that's in every county but one in the state's toolbox.
Two, but ours in Queen Anne's, on the island.
Other one, other one.
Right, okay.
So the question that you're raising is, in a bidder situation, could they do that? That's one issue.
Right.
The other thing is the county on the front end saying, "Here's an extremely complex project that we need to manage, and here's all the factors that we want to make sure that are in there." That, this amendment would.
It must be a PLA, and therefore, you want to be able to require it. My point is, if you put it in that it could be a PLA, then if you get a bidder who comes in and they say, "Look, a PLA makes the most sense here, and we're going to make that bid, and we're going to put that in front of you," you all have that discretion to figure out if that works for you or not.
But that's not what this amendment does. It takes away the other facet of this that I just mentioned, that the county may want to look at it from the beginning, and may want to set certain standards within that PLA. I mean, you know, defer to Mr. Heim on whether or not this could generate a cause for another company to come in and say, "Well, you know, you gave Company X an unfair advantage here." You get to start to litigate what's in their PLA versus my PLA versus, you know, Miss Klaus Meyer's non-PLA bid. You know, I think the, this is a very simple bill that just removes the prohibition and puts this tool back in the toolbox.
What it does actually is it allows the county on the front end to say, "We are requiring a PLA for this bid."
Correct.
And therefore, anyone who does not want to do that, do not apply. And that's what this allows on the front end, and that's what I'm trying to say, doesn't make sense to me, because I think you should open it up as broad as possible, just like we were talking about earlier, open it as broad as possible, and see what you get, and then weed through those things. And you've got a wonderful purchasing office, which should be able to weed through all those things and figure out what makes the most sense for this county.
So again, then I think in that case, you know, I would recommend you vote against the bill. I mean, from where the county executive is.
Yeah, but I think there's a way we can get to the same place you want without having to vote against it.
But I think that this amendment doesn't get there because, you know, there's, there may be a situation where this tool is something that the executive wants to include.
Okay. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Raviyan?
If we trust our purchasing department, our procurement officers, to make wise decisions about purchasing, why wouldn't we give them the discretion to say, "We know that this is the avenue we want to take for this project," give them the ability to do that? Another administration with a different philosophy down the road could say, "We're never going to use these," and that this legislation doesn't prevent a future administration from taking that tack, but it allows any administration that wants to use them, the ability to use them, and lay that right out in front by saying, "We're not even going to bother with your bid if you don't meet these high bars that are, you know, set when you have a PLA." So I don't think that this amendment really meets what the administration's goal is, to be able to say, "We're not, we're not going to mess around with this stuff. We want the high bar."
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to call the question. I think we've thoroughly discussed Amendment Number Three, and given that there are additional amendments that look very similar, or they are meant to incorporate the discussion that we're having, and the fact that we need to get to a bill on county pay, I'd like us to call the question.
I agree. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Three?
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pousky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number Three is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four, this amendment prohibits project labor agreements but allows for use of prevailing wages in accordance with state law.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, another attempt at trying to balance this out, one of the things that I've heard from the administration is that higher wages is a priority, and I hear that, given that the ban does not restrict sort of hours and holiday schedules and things like that from being in a project labor agreement already. In my mind, the best way to make an even playing field for everyone and incur higher wages, or set forth higher wages for the employees working for the contractors, is to mandate prevailing wages to be used on certain county projects. This avoids the situation where you are requiring a contractor who is a non-union from signing on to the dispute resolution provisions, or those types of things, but it requires them to meet those prevailing wage rates. So in terms of putting people at a level playing field when they're bidding, you've now got everyone bidding with the same labor classifications, the same requirements. These are wages set by the state. I have put in here that it would follow the state law on this, so it is already well set forth as to how they're determined, you know, the classifications, they're set project to project, they would be known well in advance. So this accomplishes the administration's goal of getting the higher wages for those employees without some of the restrictive portions of the PLA that might otherwise inhibit full, open competition from all contractors within the area.
The administration?
So, thank you, and I do appreciate the opportunity to have had a discussion about this the other day. So the administration, and I think I said this in the conversation, and I've confirmed it, the administration would be happy to work with you to bring forward better, family-sustaining wages for county projects. We completely agree that one of the goals is improving wages, but that's not the only goal. And to be clear, prevailing wages in PLAs are different issues. This amendment really should be a separate bill. So first, I think we need to do a full financial and risk assessment about what this would mean. We have no idea what the fiscal impact would be of something like this, so if you, you can't, prevailing wages, not just, that's as simple, excuse me, it's not as simple as saying, "Okay, the current wages would be here. If we add prevailing wages, the delta is the cost." We would have to look at the operational and regulatory costs. It's possible that the Office of Law might need an additional attorney. We might need additional procurement officers. We may want to clone Mr. Heim. Like I said, I mean, I think we'd be happy to work for and towards prevailing wages and best value contracting, and all the things that are associated with that piece of it. But it would not be fiscally responsible to trade one for another without having at least done the, a full analysis of where we would be if we accepted prevailing wages. And I don't want that to sound like we're opposed to prevailing wages. The county executive and the administration is extremely interested in doing it, and nothing, I believe nothing in code prevents procurement now from looking at a project that would have prevailing wages on it on the front end, but doing so means there's some additional regulatory and operational costs that need to be looked at and built into something like this.
And just so that I understand, because I believe it was Mr. Jackson who mentioned that the PLAs are usually built around the prevailing wages, so is there then a fiscal impact and a regulatory impact and whatnot with the PLAs themselves?
I believe they're structured differently. I mean, I think what his point was.
Mr. Heim is nodding his head.
Is it?
I think that it depends on the project specifics, so it's hard to be able to say that based off of, you know, X-dollar project with X schedule. We'd have to look at it, you know, if we're building a $500 million project, then yeah, probably there would be additional staffing needs to be able to address that and manage that. If it's something much smaller, then probably, yeah.
So in either case, I mean, the passage of the bill itself may not have an impact, but if, in either case, with a PLA or with a prevailing wage, if a project is looked at, there may be a fiscal impact to it and a regulatory component to it. Is that fair?
Really, it really depends on the size of what you're dealing with.
Right.
Circumstantial.
Certainly, okay, thank you.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just point out that the amendment refers to 17-101 of the state finance? It should be 201.
I think 101 is the definitions, is why I started with that.
Well, but you say prevailing wages in accordance with 17-101 et cetera, and the actual prevailing wage law is in subtitle two, which, and I think the definitions are in 201.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, sorry. Yes, the definitions are in 201.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to be blunt for a second. This is what this feels like to me. We've offered a number of options which would allow discretion. Doesn't seem like the county wants the discretion, at least on the front end. It sounds like the county wants to be able to mandate on the front end that this is going to be union versus non-union labor. That's what this strikes me as. I want to understand that, because when we talked about the purpose of the bill just a moment ago, you said that the purpose of the bill was not just prevailing wage, there's more to it, there's greater purpose. Understood. It seems to me that's the true purpose of this bill, is to actually say, on the front end, "We are going to require PLAs, we're going to impose certain things, that non-union labor is not even going to bid this contract, and therefore, it's all going to be union." Now, if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong, but that's what it looks like to me is actually going on here.
I mean, I think there are, and if you look at project labor agreements that have been done in both the private and public sector across the country, there are represented and non-represented employees, workers on those jobs. It is, it is against federal law to require that they be union members or not.
I got you, but you can write it in such a way that you ensure that it's only unions who are going to bid the contracts, no?
Well, I mean, I think if there's money to be made, contractors would bid for the project.
Okay. Well, then I guess I'm sort of struggling with why, with all of these, again, I keep calling them scalpel amendments as opposed to machetes, why in the world it is that there's so much opposition to them, when it sounds like they're going to get us, I mean, I went through the whole thing with Mr. Heim, and he said, "If we make the one change that was discussed with Councilwoman Harris, that we effectively are going to get to the place we need to go, except that on the front end, you can't require PLA."
Right, and so that's, and so that's, that's not, I would argue that's not a scalpel, that's cutting off an arm.
Well, but why do you want to require them on the front end? Why don't you want to see what everybody can bring to the table?
Because, well, first of all, for the most part, I mean, bidders, bidders, it's usually the owner of the project, in this case, the county, that would be setting the terms of the project.
I got you.
Bidders generally don't. Bidders generally don't come with, you know, and I defer to you, that, Mr. Heim, I don't believe we've had any bidders offer it.
So I want to just kind of jump back to what we were talking about with Councilwoman Hare and talking with you about this as well. What my concern is to make sure that the standards that we establish in the solicitation, the requirements, the requirements that we would have to hold everybody to standard to. Now, you do an RFP, it is the best value approach. So a lot of times, what we're saying is, "You tell us how you get there, but here are the major requirements of how you need to get there."
Sure.
Those major requirements would have to dictate the standard terms that everybody has to play by in order to be able to respond to the solicitation. So that would have to be a requirement to dictate the requirements that we would need to set in the solicitation of whatever standards we're going to set within the PLA to be able to say, "Everybody's going to be working at this expectation." Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm tracking where you're going, but I guess, what I'm just trying to understand is how this doesn't get you there.
Because you're saying it wouldn't, I think to their point, what they're saying is, is the provision that by removing it completely...
From the front end?
Yeah, on the front end.
From the requirement on the front end.
Because we have to be able to require it in the solicitation. We would have to be able to require something of the PLA to be able to say, "These are the standards that have to be met, and here's the PLA that we would use, or here's how this standard would apply."
And you can't write, you can't write that in some other way that would still encourage the same result?
I say, calling it by a different name is still violating the prohibition right now. So taking by what the intent of this bill is doing, 5619, taking that out, it removes that restriction.
Okay.
Just a quick point of order. I know that the legal use of the state code, you said that was not correct.
Yes, it should be sent into it.
But the second thing I had a question on, we refer to the state code of state finance and procurement. Well, if it's a county project, it might not comply, it might compor.
Right.
So, I mean, in the state, my understanding, that section of the code, the way I read it was that it already requires prevailing wage, and that's mostly on school projects, am I correct?
On projects that are funded more than a certain percentage by the state or the federal government.
Correct, so it's only prevailing wages under certain circumstances, not all.
It's not always, yeah.
To my understanding, it also requires prevailing wages on public work, and that public works is defined quite broadly as sort of any structure or any, anything in there.
Would that include county projects, though, because it says state code?
Under this amendment, we would be saying, in accordance with their definition, and their definition of project work would be, you know, it's any structure, including, there's a whole variety. It's a laundry list.
But the public work has to be, the cost has to be financed in a certain way with state and federal money, state or federal money, for this to apply.
But, well, we're saying you can require the prevailing wages the same way that they are required under the state code. It's the same mechanism for setting them and things like that.
If there was a state or federal funds involved in the project. That's what the state law says.
Again, I would reiterate the offer that we are making. If there's a chance to do some, a work group or a study group on bringing prevailing wages to the county, we stand ready to work with the council to do that. This bill is dealing with project labor agreements, and I don't believe we should be trading, they're not interchangeable issues.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll call the question. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Four is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five: This amendment allows project labor agreements so long as ad-alternate bidding is used and requires an annual cost comparison report regarding the use of project labor agreements in the county.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is offered by Counselwoman Hare.
Thank you. So this last one, it repeals the ban, as the administration has proposed, but it introduces a little bit additional transparency into the process. So the way I foresee it is exactly as it's stated. You use an ad-alternate, so if their baseline bid is to include a PLA, you ask for a price as if the PLA were not there. I think we need to track the costs of this. There's been some testimony that using a PLA is more efficient and more cost-effective and less expensive. There's also been some comments that using a PLA increases the cost of a project, and it's difficult to know when we're comparing a project in DC to a project in Laurel, to a project elsewhere, really what the true cost of the PLA is or isn't. And I think, sort of ideally, we should start compiling as a county some of this data so that in a few years, we can look back and actually look at the historical data for us as it is, and will know then the true cost impact of it. So this doesn't, this repeals the ban, this allows you to mandate it on the front, but it simply requires the collection of data from a transparency standpoint so that the council, and it requires the report to be made to the council, so that we can evaluate the costs on an ongoing basis.
Counselwoman Lacy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, from what I'm understanding, to be, Councilwoman Hare's intent, I agree with the idea of collecting data, but I think also where the administration is committing to doing a work group, that that's probably the more efficient way to get there, rather than, in this particular instance, trying to design a study from the DAIS basically through legislation. I don't think we could be sure that we are getting accurate data that we actually want to rely on in the future, so, but if we do a work group or study first, we could plan that out better and then revisit the same subject based on that additional thinking. So I won't support this amendment, but I hope it's clear that, you know, we can still move forward and agree on the data.
Counselwoman Pickard, and then the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one concern about a report. If we don't, if we don't do a project with a project labor agreement and without a project labor agreement, I don't know what we're comparing, because every project is very, very different. The complexities are different, the work itself, the building itself, the infrastructure project is very different. So what would we actually compare one project to the other? What would we glean from that? I'm just asking.
Yeah, so it would be very difficult to be able to do a project comparison for it, and there's a couple other, I think, more technical procurement aspects of this that we would have to talk about, but yeah, I agree with you, that would be very difficult.
So the administration would be committed to including issues like that if we are talking about prevailing wages and contracting in general in a work group. One concern that was raised in conversations with Mr. Heim, and I defer to him if I get it wrong, but often, with the projects we're talking about are very large scale, there is an extremely high front-end cost to even bid for these contracts, and adding this component could actually end up pricing out contractors who are smaller and, you know, you know, there's examples of contracts, you know, just the bid process alone being in the tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'm sure you know this much better than I. So there's some concern, I think, related to whether or not we're adding additional costs on to the contractors by requiring this exercise.
Aren't we adding additional cost to the contractors by requiring a PLA?
It would depend on the PLA, and it would depend on the project, and it would depend on the procurement officer's professional judgment about what should be in and what it would work. And I think there are many examples of companies preferring to use project labor agreements when the project itself shows a benefit for it.
Mr. Heim, I'd be interested, since you're the expert in this, if you have any better mechanisms for tracking potential cost-benefit analysis.
Yes, absolutely, and I think one of the things we'd want to look into is, first, better understand the market, maybe again, looking at an RFI mechanism to be able to understand more about what the marketplace entails for the specific type of project, to try and get some research initially. Cost-wise, I think one of the things to give consideration to is looking at, you know, trying to be able to pull some specific examples of where PLAs have been used for similar type of projects. So if we're presented with a capital project that kind of shows that it might lend well to a PLA, looking at similar type of examples of where a PLA has been done for projects of that similar type of scope or requirements.
But I'm looking at the cost comparison between those done with a PLA and without, so would we be able to do that sort of on a slightly broader scale?
I think that would be really challenging in the, doing an apples-to-apples comparison. And the other thing I would point out with kind of how this amendment is drafted, we can't give consideration to the adult pricing that might be able to be utilized, and I think that creating an adult pricing is only something that can be utilized after the award has already been made. It's gravy on top. It's not something that we can utilize in the actual award process. So it would just be for analysis purposes.
Yes, which is all I intend it for.
Right, and I think there's certainly some way we could craft the solicitation that gives us some of that same information. I think that as long as everyone was under the realization that, "Oh, well, I can't use this adult price if this is better or more favorable," it would only be for...
Informational purposes only.
Informational purposes, and then if we execute that and choose to amend later on, it would be something we could utilize.
With that, I would ask for a favorable vote on this so that we can start getting to collect the data.
Counselwoman Rodvian.
I just want to say, I appreciate the idea of collecting the cost data, but I feel like if we collect only the cost data and don't have it in a larger context, we may be missing some really important benefits of, you know, of PLA versus non-PLA contracts. So I just, while I support this, I think we should save this conversation for another time and put it, make sure that it's part of a broader context, because I think some of the goals that we want to meet as a county are beyond just fiscal goals. I mean, fiscal goals are important, but they're not the only goals. So I think it's important to look at all of them and see, you know, what the trade-offs are. If you have a, you know, project that's built, you know, under the bid, but then two years later, you have to, you know, do repairs because things weren't done, you know, by the most highly trained, you know, skilled labor, that should be part of the equation, too. So I feel like everything needs to be in a context.
Just to follow up with the comments, because I spoke with the administration, some of my colleagues about this. I don't think we need a law to mandate it, but I did request how much Anarona County businesses, whether union or non-union, are part of jobs, and I certainly plan on bringing forward legislation very soon to give a benefit if you have a business in Anarona County. That's a whole nother discussion, but I think if we're talking about bidding, you know, that's something that maybe as we go through the process, that that should be reported. How many people actually live here, work here, and are doing the work on the jobs, because obviously, we talk about that. I always reference the school board study that was done, about every dollar, you know, spent is a dollar twenty-three in Anarona County economy. I'm sure the same goes for workers who live and work in Anarona County for that same thing, so we can do that. Any further discussion, comments? All right, let's call the question and read Amendment Number Five, and take the roll, Madam Secretary.
Okay, I'll call the roll on Amendment Number Five. Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Mr., Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Five is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Six.
Amendment Number Six: This amendment allows project labor agreements, if included, in a county executive's proposed budget.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselwoman here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was actually something that you and I had discussed previously, that I thought perhaps you were coming up with an amendment with, but to our question earlier about whether or not we could ask the county executive to designate a project that might be appropriate for a PLA in the proposed budget, because there may be a fiscal impact, and I think it would be important for the county council to at least have that consideration at the time of the budget. This simply requires, it repeals the ban, but it says that the, I'm sorry, it allows the project labor agreement to be allowed if it's included in the county executive's proposed budget, if it's designated as such.
And I think that, we had a brief conversation earlier, I think that, I think if you say that whether it qualifies, you know, whatever the framework is for qualifying for a PLA. My concern, my only concern about this is the way the procurement process works for these large projects, is that you may not know the qualifying factors like cost. I mean, I'm sure that this is only going to be used in rather expensive projects. So you're not, you may not know that until you get the design phase, and so, you know, you may not know that on December 1st, when you're getting ready to do your capital budget. So if this would somehow tie the hands, in other words, of having to require it at the time that the budget, the project is put in the budget or the budget is passed, that's, I think, a concern, as opposed to just identifying this is a project that may be eligible. So that would be my, the other concern I have from a legal standpoint of the budget is that the capital budget, the county's capital budget includes Board of Ed projects and community college projects, neither of which are actually procured by the county, and, which many times are the larger, you know, the board is building schools that are usually much more expensive than a lot of the projects that the county has. So anything that would affect those projects, I'd be, we can't speak for what the board or the community college is going to do, so.
Certainly. I think, actually, so the other day at the work session, we talked about the fact that if a project is going to be designated as used by a PLA, you would know quite a bit in advance because there's a good bit of planning and whatnot that needs to go into it. So I was actually thinking that you'd probably know long before any money was put in the proposed budget, and if you get through the design phase and you want to put it in for the construction phase, you designate it as such in the proposed budget. I don't see this as a real hindrance. I think that this just gives the county council a look at it in the proposed budget, particularly because there may be a fiscal impact of it, and then it would give us that ability to take that last glance at it.
Counselman Volkey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, that was the answer that was given when Councilwoman Hare, Councilwoman Rodvian, Chairman Pusky, and myself were here at the work session on Tuesday, and we were asking those questions. We were sitting there having the same discussion about how in advance you're going to know, and you all said, "This is probably years on some of these projects. You're going to know a long time." And then I remember the chairman was asking questions about, "Could it be included in the budget? What kind of things could you have?" That's literally what this does. So how does this cause a major problem, one, and two, how does this limit Board of Ed and community college procurements?
Well, you couldn't put it in there for them. I mean, all of their projects are listed, so it would only be the county projects.
Right.
And I'm not saying that you wouldn't know far in advance. The problem is, at what point are you going to look at whether you're not, you're going to prohibit the use of it based on which budget it ends up in, so to speak?
Yeah, but we're, in our CIP, we're looking out six years.
Exactly.
I mean, we're going to have a pretty good sense of whether we're going to use a PLA or not when you're looking out six years.
Maybe, but if in 2020, it hasn't been identified, and then the project is accelerated in some way, and, you know, we say, "Oh, we're going to do it this year. We would want to use the PLA. Oh, wait a minute, we can't because we didn't put it in the budget," you know. So that's the concern, and that's why I'm saying, if you want to say it meets the qualifications, I think that that's a, you know, that doesn't, I don't know if, you know, is the purpose really to tie the hands of the administration and whether or not to use it?
I think the purpose is to try to figure out what in the world's going on and have the council be advised of it, but anyway.
Counselman Pickard.
So my concern with this, while on paper, I want to make sure we're not getting into unintended consequences. I also know we need to move this meeting along, but with the conversation and debate that's been happening around this bill, I'm concerned that adding this demarcation of a PLA in the capital budget politicizes a project beyond necessary, because there's clearly some very clear objection to the concept of a project labor agreement, and I don't know that that's also the work of this council. That seems to be the work by charter of the county executive to discuss how we procure capital projects.
The administration would agree.
Question for the auditor, just going through that was raised. As far as the eligibility for projects, would that be listed on the budget page? How would that be reported? Do you know by any chance?
It would be a conditional requirement, I guess, to, yeah, or I guess in this case, you're not, you're saying it can be used, so it wouldn't be a restriction. It would go on the budget page of the capital projects.
So for the procurement office, it would be listed as eligible? Is that, I mean, I'm just, so people are asking, where do you see that, where it would be, and how it would be reported? Okay. All right, any further questions?
This is mandatory, I think.
All right. Counsel thinks that it's...
I think it's mandatory to have it listed if you want to use it. I mean, that's the way I'm reading it. I may be misreading it, but...
Where does...
And I think in Article Four, there's the requirements of what has to be in the capital budget. There's a list of things that have to be for each, included for each capital project. So I think that's probably where this goes, eligibility for project labor agreement.
Okay. Counselman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies for interrupting. Where does it mandate it?
Well, it says, "A project labor agreement may be allowed if it is..." Well, it says, "A project labor agreement may be allowed if it is included in the county executive's proposed annual budget," which tells me that if it's not in the proposed annual budget, it is not allowed.
So we're interpreting, okay.
Well, no, I mean, if, you know.
It doesn't expressly come out and say, this must be in the capital budget. So we're sort of reading between the lines on this one.
Well, it says, "may be allowed"
Right.
as opposed to prohibited.
Right.
So I don't see that as discretionary.
Okay.
This is saying it has to be there if you want to use it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, given the time, and I'm getting the feeling that we're like Loopy up here, because this is starting to feel a little bit like Alice in Wonderland. The plain language here doesn't require interpretation, it just says, "may be allowed if it is included." Necessarily implies it's not allowed if it's not excluded, and I think we need to move on.
Okay, we'll call the question. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Six and call the roll.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Six is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Seven.
Amendment Number Seven. This amendment allows project labor agreements if proposed in any procurement.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is being introduced by Councilwoman Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the last one. This just goes right back to the language that Mr. Hyman and I talked about, about how beforehand it was if it was proposed by a bidder. We've changed that noun to reflect if it's proposed in any procurement to give the discretion among all contract types in the county.
Administration?
Appreciate the edit, and again, going back to the discussion, that solves one problem, but it doesn't solve the front-end problem. So for that reason, the administration respectfully asks the council to reject, for all the reasons stated in the previous discussion.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Seven.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Seven is defeated.
Madam Secretary, my understanding is that the only amendment that was passed is a technical amendment, so this bill can be voted on?
That is correct.
Is that correct? Could you please read Bill Number Fifty-Six?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Fiedler?
Before we go to voting, I just want to make a brief statement. So, sitting here and listening to the dialogue, or however long we've been listening to the dialogue, where I am stuck is that there is not a ban. There is a ban on a requirement. So I don't see the necessity of this bill, and I also think that we have a history in our county of, in some situations, of putting the cart before the horse. So when we're talking about doing a work group after a bill has already passed, I think that's an example of putting the cart before the horse. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting this bill this evening.
Can Madam Secretary read the title of the bill? Then we can open it up for discussion. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Fifty-Six-Nineteen.
Bill Number Fifty-Six-Nineteen is amended in ordinance concerning purchasing project labor agreements. And I believe now we would be calling the roll on the amended bill.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, I echo the sentiments that Ms. Fiedler noted, and I also want to point out that there's actually some precedent for this particular council in doing exactly what she mentioned, which is taking a bill that's not quite ready and putting it to a work group. I brought an assisted living bill before this council. I got a lot of blowback from people that said that there were problems with the bill. What did we do? We withdrew the bill, and we now have, as I understand it, a work group that is taking a look at it and trying to come up with a better format of the bill. That's the typical way, as I understand it, that we deal with problems in legislation. So for us to say, we're going to pass the bill, but then come back and do a work group on the back, that just seems silly to me. The other thing I'm going to note is, you know, the business community is pretty strongly against this. We got a letter, they didn't come and testify, but Maryland Building Industry Association, they came forward with opposition to this. The Central Maryland Chamber, they came this evening and testified against the bill. That's certainly concerning to me. Ultimately, I don't think it's any surprise, I'm going to vote against this bill. We have tried to amend this in a ton of different ways to try to make this a less restrictive, excuse me, a less sort of unshackled version, and to try to still give the county executive and the administration the discretion that they need, while at the same time not completely repealing this. And so again, I sort of echo what I said last week, disappointed that we weren't able to work together to try to find something that everybody can agree on, because that would have been nice in this case. But we're back in the same spot, in that we've now had, what, six amendments, all of which are debated thoroughly, some of which admittedly are probably going to solve most of the problem, but because they don't get 100% to where everybody wants to go, defeat, party-line vote, let's run it through. And I think that's, again, disappointing. We heard testimony from people earlier to say what we'd like to see this council look like, we're doing it again.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll agree, proposed seven amendments, which I appreciate the administration's conversations in advance of this. I think some of them were creative and tried to solve a good number of the places where we might disagree, so that we could come to sort of a 7-0 vote. One of them even was just collecting data, which we seem to hear was a possibility. And even though it may not collect all the data that would be helpful, or it may not solve all the problems, and maybe we'd still want a work group afterwards, it certainly was a good place to start. I'm a little disappointed that even collecting the data from a transparency standpoint was not put into the bill. So I will be voting no on this.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
I just want to reiterate my support for the idea of collecting data. I just don't necess, I want to do it in a broader context and not just narrow it in on looking at fiscal impact. I think, you know, that's one of the philosophies that's, you know, important to me and important to my constituents in general, is to not always be looking only at the fiscal impact and looking at, you know, quality of life, environmental impacts. I mean, some of these things may not necessarily apply here. With respect to trying to come up with amendments that are sort of in the middle, I feel like this bill takes such an incredibly small step that, you know, we're down to splitting hairs. And so this step really, I don't think, is dramatically different than, it's just not dramatically different. And it gives our procurement office, our procurement officers, a tool to work with when they deem it appropriate. And they don't have to use it, they may use it. There's a lot of benefits that could come for it, and I support this bill.
Great. Last comments, real quick, as I stated earlier, and we got on the record for the procurement office, this is not mandatory, we're going to find out what projects. Number two, confirming with the auditor, we're also going to have whether it's eligible or not. And then also, we ask for reports as you come through with the budget, you know, as we go through these things, to have them listed. And I stated earlier, I think we're missing something out of the bill. We talked about prevailing wages, we talked about workers, but we did not talk about Anarona County businesses having a benefit to having their business in Anarona County. And that's something I think that this council does need to address, and I'll be bringing forward a bill to do that, that came out of this and moving forward. Let's call the question, though, on the bill. Madam Secretary, please read the, or call the roll on Fifty-Six-Nineteen.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number Fifty-Six-Nineteen is amended, is passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, due to the, please, guys. We still have, we still have several bills to pass, please. Due to the time, there was a recommendation to suspend the rules to go to Fifty-Eight-Eighteen. It's a personnel bill, because it has to be voted on. I'm not making the motion, but somebody else would have to do so.
So moved.
So, again, the motion would be to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill Number Fifty-Eight-Nineteen. Is that correct, Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion for such?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we have a motion on the floor.
I'd prefer to wait to call the roll. I won't be able to hear over the noise of the people leaving.
If everyone could be quiet in the audience, we're still trying to conduct business. Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a motion that's improperly moved and seconded to suspend the rules and move Fifty-Eight-Nineteen up on the agenda due to being a personnel bill. Could you please call the roll on that motion?
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hear and vote on Bill Number Fifty-Eight-Nineteen out of order is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Fifty-Eight-Nineteen.
Bill Number Fifty-Eight-Nineteen, an ordinance concerning personnel classified service exempt service.
Mr. Barron?
Pete Barron, sorry. Pete Barron with the county executive. With me at the table is Ms. Klausmeyer and Ms. Dickerson. Fifty-Eight-Nineteen implements the pay provisions of all 12 union contracts for FY 2020, as well as the pay package approved by FY 2020 budget for all non-represented employees, exempt employees, employees of the state's attorney's office, circuit court, and soil conservation. It provides salary, pay adjustments for members of ASME 582, deputy sheriff's, sheriff's sergeant, annual leave that exceeds the maximum carryover limit of 35 days per calendar year will be converted to disability leave. All of these provisions were worked out with the unions or the budget process. We do have a technical amendment, which we'll discuss at the appropriate time. I know I read fast, but I'm trying to be mindful of the clock and for the discussion.
Okay, any initial questions? Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one. The impasse hearing that we had to do a resolution on, I assume that that information, that data is in here. Okay, thank you.
Correct. Madam Auditor, anything to add?
I can just add that, you know, we review it and make sure it's in compliance with the union agreements and that there are sufficient funds in the budget to cover it.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Okay, let's open up the public hearing on Fifty-Eight-Nineteen. I have no one signed up, no movement in the audience. We will now close the public hearing on Fifty-Eight-Nineteen. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Fifty-Eight-Nineteen.
Bill Number Fifty-Eight-Nineteen, an ordinance concerning personnel classified service exempt service.
Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, we do have a technical amendment. Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendment Number One?
Amendment Number One. This technical amendment corrects the language inadvertently emitted punctuation and a misidentification of the C1 and C2 pay grades.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this amendment is from the administration. Mr. Barron?
This amendment is technical, and I don't believe I have anything else to add, other than what was in the description read by staff.
Okay, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Due to the fact that this is a technical amendment, the bill can now be read and voted on. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Bill Number Fifty-Eight-Nineteen?
Bill Number Fifty-Eight-Nineteen is amended, personnel classified service exempt service.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary?
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number Fifty-Eight-Nineteen, as amended, is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Fifty-Seven-Nineteen.
Bill Number Fifty-Seven-Nineteen, an ordinance concerning boards, commissions, and similar bodies, Human Relations Commission, discrimination in housing.
Mr. Barron and, I believe, Ms. Lacy. Not sure who would like to speak.
Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trying to get back to the right place in my notebook, sorry. We go out of order. Actually, think, you know, hopefully, hopefully this will save some time. And I appreciate that my colleagues who are going to be proposing amendments on this bill did so sufficiently in advance that we had an opportunity to review them. And I will just give my comments specifically about them. The first two amendments that are proposed are both situations that I contemplated together with our legislative council in drafting the bill and considering what are the different mechanisms that might work to, as far as the parameters for when members would be on the council, I'm sorry, the Human Relations Commission, and when they could be removed. And as far as Amendment Number Three, since we previously discussed that with Bill Fifty-Five-Nineteen, I'm just going to wrap it up and say I'd support all of those amendments.
Councilwoman Lacy? I don't think we want to discuss amendments yet. I know we're trying to get through it, but I'll just make a general statement, because we'll talk about the amendments as we go through.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, any administration?
Good evening again. Pete Barron with the administration. With me at the table is Ms. Koch from ACDS, from Office of Law, Ms. Klausmeyer, and from the Human Relations Commission, Mr. Mike Dye. He is the current chairman of the Human Relations Commission. So I want to thank the sponsor for working to get this bill ready. It is the companion bill to the Fair Housing Bill. This codifies the Human Relations Commission. The commission has been in place since the 60s, but this will give it some real tools to combat housing discrimination in Anarona County. get the job done. I'll save running through the, all the components of the bill, but I do want to highlight a couple of key points here. So currently, it only exists under executive order. No county executive in the past has been foolish enough to revoke it, but there have been changes, and it is at the subject of a nonstatutory body. Many of our sister counties have, in fact, most have a Human Relations Commission in code, and we feel it's important to bring Anarundale County in line. The members of the committee will be nominated by the county executive and confirmed by the county council. The human relations officer is a county employee which will be designated by the county executive, will sit on the commission as an ex officio and nonvoting member, and also has some roles and duties under the bill. The commission will also have to file a report to the county executive and the county council on or before January 31st of each year that sets forth its goals and accomplishments. So the big thing here is you have subpoena power, you can have a hearing. A person who is aggrieved by a decision of the, or by an order of the commission may file an appeal to the Board of Appeals. If you're still not happy, you can go from the Board of Appeals to judicial review and so on up the chain. So I'll speak to the amendments at the appropriate time, but to tip our hand, we think they make the bill better.
Thank you, Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only other thing I want to add to Mr. Barron's, I think, pretty good explanation of the bill is that this also, I believe, allows the commission to now levy fines, which the commission does not currently have the ability to do.
Correct.
So that's another big component to this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have some folks that have been, remain patient, I appreciate that. So if we can open up the public hearing, allow them to come forward. I'll call you up at a time, and you have a name, address, two minutes. And I'm going to do the best I can with the names here. Backham Samuels, Antonia Fassinelli, it looks like Mike Dye crossed his name out here, Lucine Parsley, Stephen Waddy, Pastor Tim Stern.
Susan Crawford should be on that list.
Yeah, towards the bottom, we're going to call the first six. Yep, so how many do we have here? Because I called one more. I think Mr. Waddy left.
Nope.
Oh, he's here? Oh, you are, okay. Sorry, there was another gentleman. Okay, so we have, all right, well, let's just go with this panel. Backham Samuels.
That's actually Barbara Samuels.
Sorry.
From the ACLU of Maryland, Fair Housing Attorney, 3600 Clipper Mill Road in Baltimore. We support this bill 5719. It is a very modest but very long overdue measure to establish the enforcement powers in the Human Relations Commission. Anarundale County remains the only county in our region who does not have those enforcement powers. And as I think I mentioned on July 1st, enacting a fair housing law and enacting enforcement powers for a local commission is the minimum that local governments do in order to fulfill their federal statutory duty to affirmatively further fair housing. It's the low hanging fruit, and so Anarundale County is really an outlier in not having this previously. In fact, in 2011, the county's own analysis of impediments to fair housing recommended giving the Human Relations Commission the sort of procedures and enforcement authority that this bill proposes at a minimum, and described the current state of Executive Order 26 that established the HRC as quote-unquote "well-intentioned but effectively useless." Now, have, over the past five years, and certainly in recent years, the county's lack of a fair housing law and lack of disenforcement authority is not neutrality on fair housing. It has sent a message, and it's sent a really unfortunate message. So while this bill is not alone going to eliminate all housing discrimination in Anarundale County, it is a necessary first step, and we urge you to pass this bill.
Antonio Fassinelli?
Good evening. Antonia Fassinelli, Executive Director at the Homeless Persons Representation Project. My address is 201 North Charles Street in Baltimore, Maryland. We are here today in strong support of this legislation, bill 5719, in particular because we recognize that Anarundale County has the fifth highest rate of homelessness when considering annual counts across the state of Maryland. And we see access to housing as the primary solution to homelessness for this jurisdiction. And much of the discussion this evening and on July 1st, I think, addressed some really critical tools towards solving homelessness in this particular region. Those tools are essentially ineffective if you don't have a mechanism to enforce them. And so bill 5719 really gets to the heart of that. I just want to mention, you have my written testimony, but I have noted a couple of components. As Ms. Samuels just said, national organizations really do recommend the creation of an administrative agency responsible for overseeing enforcement of fair housing laws, and that those entities have the ability to handle administrative complaints and have hearing officers and be able to conduct investigations, and that's really what this legislation does. It is, it is a great first step. It could be bolstered, for sure, but I think that this is certainly a great first step in this direction. In particular, one of the things that was mentioned in the 2011 analysis of impediments to fair housing that Ms. Samuels mentioned is the need for testing, and even though this legislation doesn't specifically address that, it would be important for this body to consider contracting for testing services to ensure that mechanism is an option.
Thank you. Looks like Mr. Dye crossed his name out, I just want to make sure. Is that correct, Mr. Dye? Mike Dye?
He actually hasn't read all the bills yet.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure everybody's heard. Lucine Parsley?
Yes, Lucine Parsley, Disability Rights Maryland, we're at 1500 Union Avenue in Baltimore. We're here tonight as, in support of this bill, really on behalf of the Anarundale County residents with disabilities who would be beneficiaries of this bill. We often see and receive complaints, we're a legal services organization, provide free legal services as well as being the protection and advocacy center for persons with disabilities from Anarundale County residents, and we intervene when we can to protect people's fair housing rights, but recognize that legal services cannot meet the need and that many people are faced with being discriminated against on the basis of their disability in housing. So really, we're here, wanted to be here today to talk about the benefits of fair housing and enforcing people's rights and really enhancing people with disabilities' independence, their ability to stay in their homes and have that housing stability that they need. For example, a tenant may request a reasonable accommodation to their disability, like a ramp, like a change in the way that the landlord deals with the tenant, emotional support animal, live-in aide, and if the landlord just doesn't respond to them or denies their request, their ability to remain living in their homes could really be curtailed. So it's really important that they get what they need so that our friends, our neighbors, our family members with disabilities can stay in their communities and avoid institutionalization, nursing homes, and really live life to their fullest. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Stephen Waddy?
Thanks. My name is Stephen Waddy, political action chair for NAACP in Anarundale County, testifying on behalf of President Jacqueline Boone Alsup of the Anarundale County branch of the NAACP. The NAACP of Anarundale County supports bill number 5719, and this bill would do many great things. Residents cannot just rely on a law like 5519 that, like bill 5519 that supports fair housing, they need the backing of a well-staffed and deeply engaged commission that can receive complaints, conduct field hearings, make recommendations, public recommendations, subpoena bad actors at all levels of society, and bring the power of the state to bear against persistently bigoted attitudes and behaviors that narrow opportunities for interaction, in interaction between the races, and so we can understand the historical discrimination that's gone on. We talked about categories earlier, and we're addressing categories that have been historically discriminated against, and offering nondiscriminatory attitudes for that and remedies in place for that. The other aspects of this bill that we appreciate is the data collection. We want to have the Anarundale County, the Anarundale Human Relations Commission will improve the opportunity for data collection on incidents of discrimination. The issue of data collection has been a consistent problem in Anarundale County and the state of Maryland for at least the past decade. The state of Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development lists improved data collection as one of the five key areas to improve fair housing activities at the state level. A 2011 analysis of impediments to fair housing also listed the inability to receive complaints as an impediment to data collection, and we support this bill, thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Tim Stern?
Hi, I'm Tim Stern, the pastor at Arkendove Presbyterian Church, 8424 Piney Orchard Parkway in Odenton. I'm also the co-chair of ACT, we were here two weeks ago, 27 member and friend organizations, Muslims, Christians, Jews, Unitarians, united in our quest for safe and affordable and fair housing without discrimination in our county. I appreciate the work on 5519, here tonight to speak in favor of 5719, which is the logical next step for our county because implicit bias and systemic racism have not yet been conquered in our culture. So we think this law with some teeth and a human relations commission with some power is a must. ACT stands solidly behind, or against discrimination in housing, and this bill is an important next step. Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony, appreciate it. We're going to call up the next group. Ms. Amy Leahy, Euripsi Morgan, Carl Snowden, D.R.L.E. Gomez, and Ms. Cochran. Ms. Leahy, I do not see in the audience. Ms. Euripsi Morgan?
I think you've got everybody. Are you only got?
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I know she had her radio show, so I didn't want to. Carl Snowden, I do not, I just, I want everybody to be heard, that's my prerogative here. Mr. Snowden, last call. D.R.L.E. Gomez, I do not see. And Ms. Cochran, you let me know earlier you're here to testify, so now you have that opportunity. Name and address in two minutes, and thank you.
Is this on?
Yes.
All right, Susan Cochran, 332 Hamlet Circle, Edgewater, Maryland. This bill, I'm going to get an outlier, because this bill has a new, bill for a new Human Relations Commission, changes the scope of the present commission's activities and narrows them in a way that is not helpful to human relations in the county on a whole. Presently, the commission is set up by administrative order, has a mission to educate the public and private sectors regarding diversity and inclusion, and assist in mediation of possible cases of discrimination. This was not, of course, just housing, it was education, employment, religious prejudice, bullying, et cetera. The purpose of the IRC as set up in this bill is to promote and enhance the ability of all Anarundale County residents to pursue their lives free of discrimination in housing, only housing. Under the powers and duties, however, on number nine says they should make recommendations on matters including housing, discrimination, human relations, prejudice, and intergroup relations. Now, this is broader than the purpose and is inconsistent with it. As taken as a whole, this section could logically be interpreted to mean the duties were only in relation to housing. I see confusion as to what this HRC can do. They used to concern themselves with such things as school bullying and anti-Semitism, diversity in fire and police departments. I believe the purpose section should be amended, have a broader purpose, consistent with the many years of work that the HRC has done for residents of AA County. I would add, add all aspects of county life. They should be working on all aspects of discrimination in county life. That's all I wanted to say. I really think that maybe, I don't understand why they didn't just have a separate Housing Discrimination Commission which would be devoted to this, and let the housing, the Human Relations Commission continue with these other things like anti-Semitism, bullying, all those other things that they have been working on. That's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Okay, I have no one else sign up? Does anybody like to come forward? Mr. Grasso or anyone else? Mr. Tootle? Grab a seat, we'll do name, address, in two minutes, if you would sign the sheet that Madam Secretary has there. Mr. Grasso, whenever you're ready, sir.
John Grasso, 6 Lamar Road. These commissions I've seen in many cases, particularly in Baltimore City, can really get out of control here, and I think the biggest problem I'm seeing behind this one right here is the ability to turn around and initiate fines. You're going to, you're going to put this commission together by the county executive, the question is, is it going to be bipartisan? Is anybody on that commission going to be a landlord, property owner? Is there going to be an attorney on there? And I'm willing to bet that none of those categories is going to be met. Then this rogue commission is just going to go along for whatever way they feel is incorrect, and they're going to issue a fine. So then this property owner is going to have to turn around and hire themselves and a lawyer, and go in front of the Board of Appeals to prove to them that they've done anything wrong. And to me, I think that's just, we're just going down this road, the wrong road, because all I keep hearing in going to the Section 8 thing is that there's no problem with this program, it's okay, and so we shouldn't need this commission, you know? But what I'm saying is if there's not a problem with this Section 8 program, then why is Pioneer City the way it is? Why do we have the problems we've got back over here? This commission is going to lead into, excuse me, into another commission that's suddenly going to start analyzing the police department. And what's next? We're going to go, Baltimore City went from 1,300 police officers down to 646 people because of these kind of commissions. Matter of fact, nobody wants to be a policeman anymore because of these kind of commissions. And what you're going to do is you're going to lead in, just like Volkey said, is you're going to lose and go right into a housing crisis, because the landlord is going to turn around and say, throw your hands up, I don't need this problem anymore. And that's what this is going to lead to. Now, I already got probably maybe five, six houses in Anarundale County, and I'm still going to rent the way I feel like I'm going to rent, and if I get to pull credit reports on people and do the regular criminal thing and I find anything on a criminal record, that's my out. I'm not going to rent to these kind of people, because there are good people on these programs, I'm going to make that clear. And I'm always about helping people, but when you help people out and the helping hand becomes a paycheck, that's where my problem ends, right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso, and Mr. Tootle.
Dan Tootle, 108 Escuton Road, Severna Park, Maryland. I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Veterans Affairs Commission, having looked at the setup, the structural setup for this particular commission. And there's some very significant differences structurally in the way this commission is set up and other existing codified commissions within the county, and I have questions about that. First of all, in the composition section of the, of the bill, this has to do with the number and type of members, it's on page three of the bill. It says that the commission consists of 11 voting members nominated by the county executive and approved by resolution to county council of the voting members. Our particular commission is appointed by the county executive without further, any further action by the county council. So that's, that's a very, very different approach to putting people on a commission. The second structural question I have has to do with terms of the members. This sets up sort of a freshman, sophomore, junior kind of class structure, and I know what it's there for, it's there for continuity of the commission over time. I think this may be the only commission set up in the county where the commission members are not in place only during the incumbency of the current county executive, and we have to be reappointed by the oncoming county executive because of that term within the county code. I really don't have any objection to these structural changes. My question is, what are the implications for the other codified commissions within the county?
Thank you, Ms. Tootle. Thank you to this panel, we appreciate your testimony. At this point, I see no other movement in the audience. The public hearing on bill 5719 is now closed. Madam Secretary, could you please read bill number 5719?
Bill number 5719, an ordinance concerning boards, commissions, and similar bodies, Human Relations Commission, discrimination in housing.
Okay, we do have amendments that address some of the questions that were raised. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment removes a provision that states members of the Human Relations Commission serve at the pleasure of the county executive.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that the entire council? Any, any discussion on this?
Motion to close debate, no, just kidding.
I was going to say, are you making a motion for a voice vote? Or no?
Councilman Volkey, this is your amendment.
Just very quickly, says what it does, it removes that members serve at the pleasure of the county executive and allows them to continue serving for the term that they've been appointed for.
Any other discussion, administration?
Pete Barron with the administration. We will take this as friendly, I think the intent here is to help de-politicize the Human Relations Commission, and we share that goal. The next amendment will come will clarify that folks can be dismissed for cause, so if a, if a commission member is not participating or is in other, giving other grounds, it would allow their removal. That said, I think the important goal here is to make sure that this is, is an apolitical body, it's, it's doing the job of the, the Human Relations Commission is supposed to do.
Yeah, that's exactly right, and the other thing I would just add is, I looked at the code to see where else we have these at the pleasure of the county executive. There are not that many commissions that have it, and frankly, I think we should probably get rid of it everywhere, because that way, people who get appointed keep serving, and you're not dealing with the political ramifications of, we're going to disband this commission because we got a new person in office.
I do agree with my colleague. I say we call the question. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one and call the roll.
I'll call the rolls, sir. Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two, this amendment modifies supervision allowing for the removal of members of the Human Relations Commission to allow removal for cause or for missing more than one quarter of the scheduled meetings and hearings in any 12-month period.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey?
Just briefly, again, this would change this threshold to bring it more in line with other boards and commissions that we already have in the code, and it would actually decrease the threshold for removing someone. So as opposed to 50% of the meetings being missed, this now takes it 25%. So really, if you've got somebody not pulling their weight, go ahead and take them off.
And this is similar to the Board of Appeals, where if you don't show up to the
more than one quarter of the scheduled meetings and hearings in any 12-month period.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey?
Just briefly, again, this would change this threshold to bring it more in line with other boards and commissions that we already have in the code, and it would actually decrease the threshold for removing someone. So as opposed to 50% of the meetings being missed, this now takes it to 25%. So really, if you've got somebody not pulling their weight, go ahead and take them off.
And this is similar to the Board of Appeals, where if you don't show up to meetings, you're removed because of attending, and obviously the seriousness. Administration, any other comments?
Same comment as the last amendment.
Okay, seeing no discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment removes a provision allowing fines under federal law and instead allows the imposition of a fine for a Class A civil offense under Section 92101 of the Code.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've already discussed this at length on 5519. This simply brings the language into compliance with what's been amended in that bill.
Administration?
Ditto.
Any further discussion?
We've got to stop.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Madam Secretary, since this bill was amended, 5719 will be heard at the next meeting on September 3rd, 2019 at 7:00 PM.
Correct.
Moving along, Resolution 2819. Could you please read the title of Resolution 2819?
Resolution Number 2819, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Costs of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
Mr. Barron and the crew?
Good evening again for the administration. Pete Barron with me at the table is Ms. Dickerson and Ms. Bedowski from Personnel, and Ms. Klausmeyer has joined us from Office of Law. We discussed this resolution at the work session as required by 6-1-308H. Resolution 2819 is the estimate of total health care costs for the 2020 plan year presented to the council for approval. Office of Personnel works with their health consultant each year to determine the estimate annual health costs. Prior to the introduction of the resolution, Ms. Dickerson, the consultant, met with union representatives and their health consultant. They walked through the projections, no issues on, on how they were determined were raised. For the real questions, the, Ms. Dickerson and her team are at the table, but this is a pretty critical bill, and I want to commend the hard work of Ms. Dickerson, her team, the consultant, and all the folks that were involved in this. It's not easy stuff.
Any questions from the council? Seeing no questions, let's open it up for public hearing. I'm sorry, Ms. Schewit?
I just had a question for clarification. We kind of talked about this at the end of the last hearing. Why, but why at the bottom of the Exhibit A do you show the employer subsidy for eligible full-time employees, but not show the eligible subsidy for retirees?
What are you talking about, right at the bottom of Exhibit A?
I can't hear you.
At the bottom of Exhibit A?
The chart. It's the chart where it says employer subsidy at the bottom of page...
I think it's on Page Two, the second block, employer subsidy for eligible survivors of retirees. The next one, employer subsidy for retirees hired before 1115. Then the next one is subsidy for retirees hired after 1115.
You mean you're quoting the law as to what it is in the law, as opposed to giving the specific percentage?
Yes. It's whatever that provision of the law. That, oh, sorry.
Madam Auditor, go ahead.
That provisional law, the percentage changes depending on where, when they're hired.
Not for retirees?
Yes.
The percentage cha, well...
None of you retired prior to the enactment of 8513 and 11. I'm sorry, Ambodowski, Office of Personnel. The employer subsidy split is 80/20 for retirees who are previously retired prior to the law changes and not 2015.
Okay, thank you.
We okay, Madam Auditor? I know it's late.
Too late.
I'm okay.
All right, any other questions, comments? Okay. Let's open it up for public hearing, Resolution 2819. I have no one signed up. Seeing no movement in the audience, we will close the public hearing on Resolution 2819. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2819.
Resolution Number 2819, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Costs of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2819.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2819 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2919.
Resolution Number 2919, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding.
Mr. Barron and the crew?
Good evening again. Pete Barron.
Is it morning already?
Pete Barron with the county executive, with me at the table, who has sat through the whole meeting, Ms. Beardmore and Ms. Klausmeyer from Law. As you recall from Resolution 1219, the community college petitions for funding for its health sciences and biology building. This Resolution 2919 conveys to the Maryland Higher Education Commission, Anarundel County Community College's petition for funding in the amount of $34,701,363 for Phase III of the health sciences and biology building. This project is funded by both the county and state. This is the procedure that we must follow for the state to release their share of the money. So with that, this resolution will become part of the submission package to get our money.
Any initial questions?
Please move the resolution.
Any initial questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone like to come testify on Resolution 2919? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 2919 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2919.
Resolution Number 2919, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundel Community College Funding.
Okay, seeing no discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2919.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2919 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3019.
Resolution Number 3019, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members to Serve on the Personnel Board for Anarundel County.
Ms. Schultz? Ms. Klausmeyer?
Good morning. Resolution 3019 appoints five members to the Anarundel County Personnel Board. The administration seeks to reappoint Alan Friedman, Partner and General Counsel for Blue Water Strategies Consultants, and Alan Firth, Senior Project Manager at Berkel and Company Contractors. Two new members to the board are Dee Goodwin, Human Resources Professional, and Sarita Durant, Personnel Manager of the county's Department of Detention. The administration also seeks to appoint Police Sergeant Michael Shire as a required member of the classified service. Everyone on the Personnel Board is co-terminist with the county executive, and you should have their resumes in front of you.
Okay, any questions regarding these appointments? We'll open this up for public hearing on 3019. Anyone like to come forward? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 2619 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3019.
Resolution Number 3019, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members to Serve on the Personnel Board for Anarundel County.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3019.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?